All right, good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting of Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in place in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just for all.
At this time, it's public input. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the school committee at public input?
My name is Lauren McLaughlin, Seventy-one Park Avenue in Southbridge. Happy Valentine's Day. I wore my red for you. I'm not feeling terribly well tonight and I was trying to collect some thoughts, so I apologize if I sound a little bit discombobulated this evening, but I just want to share with you something that happened last week that still stuns me. A woman came into where I work, the Southbridge Family Center, and just in the course of talking with other people said, "Hey, I heard they're going to sell Wells." I said, "Yeah, I think that is the plan, to sell Wells." She goes, "Why would they do that?" I said, "For the new school." She goes, "We're building a new school?" This is a woman who is a lifelong resident of this community, who brought in her fifth grade grand- or fifth, oh, I'm sorry, five-year-old grandson to the family center. I'm like, geez Louise, you know? And first, I brushed it off, saying, you know, "People just need to be more informed," which I absolutely do agree, that people need to take some responsibility for being informed. But another thing that happened last week that kind of also bothered me was I had the opportunity to drive my daughter to a soccer game in another community, and I gave a ride to a fifth-grade student. And that fifth-grade student relayed to me that when I said to her, "Are you excited about the new school?" And she goes, "Well, it doesn't matter." And I said, "Why doesn't it matter?" She goes, "Well, I'm not going there." I said, "What do you mean, you're not going there?" And she said, "I would never go there. None of my friends are going to go there." I said, "What are you talking about?" She said, "We're all going to school choice." I said, "What?" It really, really bothered me. I have long held the belief that this district really needs to improve communication across the board in all areas, but I don't think there's anything more telling than those two incidents that happened recently to show what a job we need to do to promote this new school. I've since the- since those two things happened and I was pretty like, they really caught me off-guard, I was pretty upset about them. I was talking to parents of students at Eastford Road School, I talked to parents of students at Charlton Street School, I talked to parents of students at West Street School. That, to my knowledge, no communication has come home this year about the new school, nothing. And that really concerns me, because I think we're missing a tremendous opportunity to share this very good news. This has been a hard-fought, hard-worked-on project that just is not getting the attention that it deserves. And part of it is that I think that we need to increase the number of tours up there or offer special tours, especially maybe to parents of fourth or fifth-grade students who are contemplating school choice. I think the staff, I've talked to many, many teachers who have not seen the school, have not had an opportunity to go up there, whether that's, if something's been arranged or not, I don't know, but I just think if we were to give people that opportunity, we'd have free advertising and we'd have hundreds, if not thousands, of ambassadors in the community sharing the news of the school, which I think is critical. School choice is killing the school district, I don't think that's any surprise. It is now impacting my children's education, because even though we choose to remain in this district, the budget cuts that happen every year in order to balance things and make things work for school choice, I believe has a negative impact on all the kids that remain behind, and something has to be done to call this. And I think we just have a really good opportunity with the new school-building project to take this head-on. And I also think, in general, talking about communication, I recently went on the school district website, this has been brought up at a, I think, if not the prior meeting, the meeting before that. The last minutes of this school committee that are on the school district website are May two thousand and eleven. The last agenda was June twenty-eighth. On the school-building project, the meeting minutes were from December fifteenth, two thousand and ten, and the last agenda was from January sixth, two thousand and eleven. I really, I don't get it. I don't get it. I don't get why we would invest so much time, effort, energy into a project and not really get out there and market it. I am, I, I would, what I would like to see in an ideal world, and I said this to Dr. Hanley, I think, five years ago when I met with her on a different topic, is to have somebody in charge of communications or publicity for the district. I know money's tight, I don't know if there's any money left in the budget for the remainder of the school year, but if somebody was hired even on a per diem basis in a non-benefited position to take this on, I think that would be money very well-spent. I remember what she said to me, I think she said, "If you had a hundred thousand dollars to spend in this district, how would you do it?" And as much as I wanted to say, you know, "Bring more teachers in" or whatever, I real- I told her, "I think we need a publicity, media, communications person in the district." And that was over five years ago, that was when Dr. Hanley, her first year here, and I still think, I still hold that opinion today. So I would just implore you, for all the good that's being done, for as beautiful as that building is, for as proud as I know you must be of it, that you would share that with other people. I did hear also from two fifth-grade parents at the school carnival at Wells the other night, they tried to get in on a tour and were tour- were told, I believe it was in November, that there were no slots open. And, you know, whether that's, I don't know, I obviously was not a part of that conversation, and I know those tours might be limited for safety reasons, I, believe me, I understand all those kind of things, but I still think we can find a way to do this and do this very well. We have only so much time left, and I just wanted to make that point this evening. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lazzo, do you want to address the tours?
Yeah, to the speaker, with all due respect, I do agree with everything you're saying, some of the stuff, some of the stuff is a little misrepresentation of the facts, but I want you to know, I agree with you on the public relations portion of having somebody constantly putting things in the paper, taking care of things, but no matter what we do in the system as far as shoot things over the newspaper, sometimes they never get in. Plenty of Tantascra and Shepherd Hill, but for some reason, we don't get that same flight. That's my personal opinion on that by reading the paper. But what we do on the Building Committee, what we've done from the beginning of the project, as, I'm not in charge of any website or anything like that, but I am chairman of the Building Committee, what we do is, we do tours for anybody, anytime, and at their, at their convenience. The track record to date, every, we've said time and time again, we've went to PTA meetings, we've put poster boards of the pictures in the elementary schools, the parents are going through, walking by it and thinking that that, what that big poster, that big thing on the foyer is, it's the new high school, middle high school. We also run tours, we've been to the clubs, we've been to the Lions Club, we went to the, not just me, the town manager, Jack, the superintendent, various players, it doesn't have to be me, it can be anybody. I know Dave DeGlorio went up with the soccer parent that wanted to know the size of the soccer field and everything, we set up one phone call, go on up, if you wanted to do it yourself, put your hot hatch on, go out there and see it. We've also, parents, every, we have a tour on the eighteenth, every third Saturday, as long as the, from the beginning of the project to the end, at nine o'clock, got to go to the superintendent's office, they mark down the name, sign the waiver, that covers the construction company to take us through. I do the tour with a gentleman from Casigli, and we've had families that have been teetering, I know Mr. Jovan does the tours often with us, and we've had families that were thinking about going to St. John's, Quayborg, Tantascra, they're not going, they didn't choose school choice, they saw the building and they're staying here. We also do special tours at any given time, I know the town manager had a request from a doctor that's moving into the area from the Harrington group, when the town manager toured it, just before our business meeting every Tuesday, the doctor decided wants to buy a house in Southbridge. So the school choice dollars, from what the town manager's saying, he's very happy that it stopped, it has stopped, and hopefully, once we're in the school, that we can make it go the other way. The portion about the public relations, it's tough to be on school committee, I know, I know that you're looking to get involved and I commend you, but when you're cut 1.6 million dollars, when you get here, you're going to find out that you're cutting the SAT prep person, secretaries in the front office that have been there for over fifty-one years, teachers, support staff, and that hurts what we do in the buildings, but we do it, and it's because that job to balance the budget. We have a finance director, superintendent, and a school committee to make those tough decisions. A public relation person, although that's a nice to have, I think some of the other positions become very, very important as far as the teacher in front of the classroom and the classroom size. So as far as the building, anybody who wants to tour the building, I've talked, I've talked to the teachers, the administrators, the union president, he came on a tour, was very impressed, thought it was fantastic. We've taken parents, we've taken business people, community people, everybody, every walk of life, you've attended on some of the tours, and we continue to do them on a timely basis on the third Saturday of every month till it opens. But if somebody has a group, and you can ask the student council president who wanted to take what we call the Southbridge High kids that want to see it, we toured with just Southbridge High Special Tour, then Amy Gentry set up one for the Wells kids, and the parents can come with them. As far as somebody saying how the school's going, oh, we're building a new school and stuff, I really do feel bad about that, but I can tell you, in the thirty years of government in Southbridge, that's the way it is. And if we're on the front page of the Southbridge News, if we are on the web, if we're on TV, we're on the Access Channel, we've had different camera people go through, film the tour, put it on the channel. We try the best that we can within the budgetary numbers, the main thing is that it's on-time on the budget, I do agree with you, I'd love to have a public relations person just to handle it. But when we're doing a tour, like we're doing a tour with Senator Moore, and it's the dignitaries of the council, school committee department heads, it's another special tour on Friday at ten o'clock, again, it's a group that's going to go through and see the progress. There are some people that don't want to go through till it's completed, ribbon-cutting I've offered, but I don't know what the answer is. I mean, we send things home out of our school buildings, and we're talking about their education, and parents don't show up. Half the kids show up for the program and the prep, and then we sit there and say, "We've sent the things home, we've done things like that in some of the other areas, and we, we're not happy about it," but we don't quit on them, and hopefully, they won't quit on their kids that will continue to work to get the building open, to show the crown jewel as many times as we can. It's a wonderful facility, it's long overdue, and I know we're on the same page with that, but the public relations piece, I know that I brought it up to the new superintendent when he first got here, and Erica is working on a position where it can be a quasi, where we can utilize it in other areas and maybe get funding through a grant or something, but I haven't got a final number, anything like that. But I do agree with a lot of what you're saying, but to be fair about it, the tour's been going on right along for anybody. Casigli's been fantastic, it's about letting us do it. And we've, Mike Walker does the Casigli presentation, I do the community, we do it together, and it's moved forward. Yes, we've had some hectic Saturdays, but certain portions of the building, but we're getting into the funnel now, so you're going to blink your eyes, you're going to be in the building in June, July, and August.
You know, I understand all that, and I absolutely appreciate it. I think, especially for parents of maybe fifth graders, where school choice opens up in sixth grade, a concerted effort needs to be made to reach out to those families. And I do think that the fact that nothing has come from the district to families directly in backpacks regarding this project this year, that I'm aware of, I just think is something that needs to be addressed. It's an easy fix, it's an easy fix, it's not even that hard to do something like that, and I think it's vital, and I really, really think that this district, I have a lot of concerns with some of, kind of what I've been hearing on the ground floor, and I just, I just think that there are ways to go about making that change that will benefit all of us ultimately, and isn't that what we want? Isn't that what we want? You know, I'm fighting for my kids, I'm fighting for your kids, I'm fighting for kids out there, you know, I mean, please, you know, I, we cannot wait anymore. Seven years I've been in this district, seven years communication has been an issue across the board, despite administrators, despite what school my kids are going to, it does not matter. And I think individual principals and people try, I do think that, but I think they have so much other stuff on their plate, that I think something like, sometimes basic communication goes by the wayside.
All right, Lauren, thank you, thank you very much for your input. I appreciate the fact on the, on the communication piece, and we've talked about it for years. And yes, those kids at the middle school, high school, have a pretty good sense about the new school, and we do need to get a better job at the lower grades, so we'll direct the superintendent to get something down to those grades and try, try better to reach out to those kids. In regards to the tours, I know we do the best we can to advertise those tours through school committee, through, through the website, I don't know how much more we can do to get parents to come up to those tours. I'm forever talking, just like you are in the district, I'm out in the district, as we all are, and we tell them all, when they say, "Hey, can I tour the school?", I tell them, "It's on this day, this is the time, we can do it," and they don't come. So, and, and I don't need to say anything more about that issue. As far as the minutes to the meeting, we did refer that back to the office to get that updated, we will follow up on that as well, because that was a concern, we talked about, we talked about it at length in a previous meeting. We do have a new administrative assistant onboard in the superintendent's office that just started, so we'll see if we can get that updated as far as that goes.
She's trying to collect them now.
So publicity person, we talked about funding that, and we'll see what we can do with that, but I appreciate everything you said, it's, we're all concerned about all the kids. School choice, the one thing I want to say about school choice, and this has been a pet peeve of mine and the school committee for years, how do we stop school choice? How do we identify the kids? Why they're going? I know I've had conversations with some parents when it comes to school choice, and one of the things they say, they talk, they talk about, "Okay, yeah, I know my kid's going to get a good education at the high school, but you don't have a pool." And if you're taking your kids to a different school district just because we don't have a pool, I can't, I can't compete with that as a school district. There's school choice in their kids because, oh, they have a swim team at Tantascra. I'm glad they have a swim team at Tantascra. The state only gave us so much money. The town is funding a good portion of this building outside of the eighty-twenty split that we got. We simply couldn't afford to put a pool in. Academ- and they said academically, "I know your kids are doing well, we have kids that are doing well, but you don't have a pool." I can't fight with that. So, school choice, we are going to tackle that further. So everything you said is, point's well-taken, and we'll take that all under advisement and refer it to the superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience?
I had Sean Moriarty, forty-four Magillane, just a quick, more or less, I wasn't planning to come up to speak, more or less kind of agree with a lot of what was said between Lauren and Mr. Lazzo and Mr. Jovan as well. One thing that's quick and easy that may work out somewhat, I think Scott and I both know just from Pop Warner and Little League, the newspaper circulation's not what it once was, cable access doesn't reach everybody with, some people have satellite, everything else, and sending out things through the schools don't always work as far as reaching kids for registrations, things like that. So one tool that I know that you use as well as us is usually putting some sort of sandwich board to sign up down at the end of the rotary, and I think if you have something like that that even just says, "Every third Saturday, every other Saturday," whatever, you may have a few more people that, as they go through that rotary every day, it sticks in their head a little bit more than, you know, how many people are watching this meeting and how many of them are paying attention to this meeting. Parental support's not exactly stellar, so, just a quick thought on that, and otherwise, I agree with pretty much everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll also see if perhaps with the police department, I know they have the flash-in sign, and perhaps we can ask the chief to utilize that at some point, okay? Mr. Lazzo?
Just a quick comment, I do agree with the previous speakers, and we did put a four-by-eight sign of the picture of the new high school, middle high school, right at the rotary, and maybe we could add the date to it, as you said, but, you know, communication's great, we've been throwing that around for thirty years, but when you extend your hand and there's nothing on the other end, we have to actually look at, you know, what to do about that. And I think that's the problem that we're suffering with society in general, with whether it be Pop Warner, schools, Little League. We start signing ups just for an example, and we don't get anybody to sign up till August last minute, so, I think, I think the people are under a lot of stress with the economy, I think it's a lot, a lot of stuff is going on in the families' homes right now, and I think that the priority in some cases is probably not coming down on Saturday for a tour of the high school, but we'll see, we'll do, we'll do our best to, to continue to communicate with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to address the school committee? Anyone else? Okay, see no one, I'll call the meeting to order, roll call.
Mr. DeGlorio?
Present.
Dr. Dabinko?
Present.
Mr. Jovan?
Present.
Mr. Lazzo?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Principe?
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Present.
Thank you. General item five, approval of minutes, the regular school committee meeting of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or remissions? See none, all those in favor? Opposed? Your name is Swallow, present. General item six, reports of representative of Student Advisory Committee, Helena Benoit. Good evening, Helena.
Good evening.
Check that. Turn on.
Terry, could you give him your mic, see if that works?
Always happens to me, always. Once again, it's been a positive time at Southbridge High School. The show choir received silver at their performance at the Central Mass Show Choir Competition. There'll be performances again at the Disney Dinner on March first. This Thursday is Alumni Night as well as Senior Night. This game will also be the last one held in the gym at Colab. Both varsity boys and girls will be playing David Proudy. For the big night, the softball team is selling end-of-the-era t-shirts. The high school recently brought in a bullying awareness assembly to open up the eyes of the students of how serious bullying is and to the new term, bull-icide. Simon Wajigi will be competing at states for the track-and-field event representing Southbridge. Last night's game was the second highest score at Southbridge, by a Southbridge team. Our boys won against Bartlett, ninety-seven to eighty-six. The highest score was a hundred seventy points in nineteen-seventy-six. The seniors are working hard towards scholarships, and the juniors are now offering, being offered an SAT class after school with Ms. Curry.
Thank you, Helena. And again, just to echo what Helena said earlier, and I'll repeat it again, Thursday night, at, beginning at five-thirty, will be the last games held in the high school gym for varsity basketball. There'll be a girls' game at, I mean, boys' game will be at five-thirty PM, girls' game will be at seven PM. We've invited all former alumni to participate in that evening. It'll also be live on cable access, and as we retire the gym, we invite everyone out there to partake in that, it should be a good evening. And the, both teams are fighting for district spots, which is great, so we'll enjoy that. Thank you, Helena. General item seven, presentations, our first presentation this evening is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's quarterly update on our Accelerated Improvement Plan.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Dr. Ava Mitchell, she is the Associate Commissioner for Accountability for DESE, and Dr. Nadine Banda, who is a state-appointed monitor for Southbridge for our Accelerated Improvement Plan. Dr. Mitchell?
All right. Well, on behalf of Commissioner Chester, Senior Associate Commissioner Linda Foysey, who could not be here tonight, my name is Ava Mitchell, I'm the Associate Commissioner.
Ms. Mitchell, could you, hold on one second. Could you ask them to turn up the mics in here, because we can't hear, I'm sorry.
Okay. Or should I talk louder, does that help?
There you go.
All right.
That might work. It was very difficult to hear you, I apologize.
Okay, so I'll begin, ooh, okay.
There you go, now we can hear you.
So I'll begin again to make sure that the public can hear as well. On behalf of Commissioner Mitchell Chester and Senior Associate Commissioner Linda Foysey, who could not be here tonight, I thank you for having us here. My name is Ava Mitchell, I'm the Associate Commissioner for District School Accountability, and I'm joined tonight by Dr. Nadine Banda, who is a former superintendent who's serving as the monitor for the plan that you have in place for Southbridge Public Schools. So the purpose of our presentation tonight is to provide you as a governing body with the information you need to best support the district, so please let us know as we go if we're doing a good job doing that or not. But what our intent is, is to roll up the information you need to know at the highest level, so that we can support you in your role as a school committee of this district. So first, I want to frame the context, then give an overview of the plan design itself, then we're going to launch into the monitor's report, and then we'll do wrap-up and questions. So just to frame the context, the last time the department came to talk with you, as you remember, some of you, it was in October of two thousand and ten, shortly after Superintendent Ely came and Carla Bear, who was a deputy commissioner at that time, and Linda and I came and spoke to you about the district review, that was conducted in February, and we had a chance to talk, dialogue about Southbridge's progress and needs. And so at that time, we had found from the district review that Southbridge Public Schools had demonstrated significant progress in developing its capacity to address student needs after quite a few years of being under a turnaround plan. Most of the work of the turnaround plan that was in place at that time had been completed, and that work really was launching the development of some important systems for curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional development, and financial management. So the systems were still in development, but the process to make them stronger and continuously refined had been put in place. We did, though, find that instructional practice at all levels was not as strong as it should be and needed more support, and that the district at that time was at the beginning stage of embedding and evaluating interventions for at-risk students. We were also concerned that at that time, we didn't see a clear performance trend for improvements in student achievements, and for special education and English-language learners, we had particular concerns. But overall, the, we were optimistic about the steps that Southbridge was taking to move forward, and when we came, we mentioned that we were aware that the new superintendent had thoughts that he shared with us about moving the district forward and would be working with us on the new turnaround plan for Southbridge Public Schools. So in the spring of two thousand and eleven, we began that work with him, and he began that work with us, I should say, and we also worked with other districts that were part of this group working on turnaround plans. So now we, we call them the Accelerated Plan, Improvement Plan for Student Achievement. And so as we designed that process, we thought carefully about the lessons learned, some of which came from this body, about what would be most helpful to move districts forward and also to communicate at the levels that everybody needed to have information at, with yours, of course, being at the highest level. And so in this work, the department and listening to our stakeholders, we learned that most, most districts, particularly ones, runs that were struggling with historic challenges and obstacles, didn't have all the capacity that they needed in-house to prioritize improvement efforts, implement plans with focus and urgency, or monitor the results in a way that allowed them to make mid-course corrections and adjustments as needed, and that they needed substantial support to build that capacity quickly. So we poised ourselves to provide that support, and we began the process of working together to develop and implement a guidance document and then support the superintendent in developing that plan with the support of a plan manager, that was a part-time position that we provided to Southbridge. And so we also provided resources like an implementation guide and a plan template and training for the plan manager and so on. And so we begun to monitor the work that Southbridge has been doing so far, and this will be the first sort of big report out that you hear. Before I continue, though, I wanted to give you a little bit better idea of what the purpose of the plan is, so you can put it in the total context, because the way that we see this is that the plan needs to be a tool that is, something that is useful for the districts, and that includes you as a governing body as well. that is useful for the districts, and that includes you as a governing body as well. So I just have three outcomes, and this, I promise you, this is a brief presentation. So right now, we have six districts that are using this process. We have early indication that this is working well in that we have seen some very quick changes in most of these districts in the first, in the first few months. So the purpose of this plan is really to leverage change most quickly at the classroom level. So it's not designed to be a strategic plan, which is the level that, as a school committee, I'm sure you're more used to operating under. This is really about making instructional changes at the classroom level and what needs to be done at the school level and then the district level to make that happen. And so the process was designed to sort of recognize that the priorities that we need to work on together had to do with quickly targeting the instructional core. And the focus of our work together is on project management, because it, it involves people working together on projects that really support those quick improvements. There's a keen focus on implementation, and by that I mean, we're looking at both the progress in terms of what adults are doing at all levels to improve practices, and then also what kind of results are happening for kids. And we also understand that a key component in this is collaboration. So it's just, it's, it's within Southbridge, Southbridge Public Schools, but it's also with the department. So we have seen ourselves as a partner in this process. So one component of the Level Four District Plan is that there's a theory of action that is the, sort of the rationale in terms of why we're doing this and what is the result that we're looking for. For us, we have a theory of action as well behind why we're doing this that, out of respect, we believe we should share with you. And so our, this is based on the research, such as from Sir Michael Barber's deliveryology and the Strategy and Action book that underlines the, the course for new superintendents. And that is this. If a district can define a narrow set of strategic objectives to accelerate student learning, execute well-defined initiatives with a relentless focus on implementation, and systematically monitor the impact of those initiatives to inform mid-course corrections, then outcomes for students will be dramatically transformed. What we're talking about here is launching a cycle of continuous improvement, and I'll show you where that fits in, in a couple of slides later. But one thing before we get there, I want to emphasize is that this is not a compliance document. Rather, the plan must be a document that's in plain English, that discusses the critical issues that have to be addressed and can be used as a communication tool for you and for all the staff. And it must be implemented by folks who have the expertise in the particular parts of the plan that they'll need to carry out. And the folks who are responsible for the different initiatives are partnering with the superintendent and with us to evaluate the impact of their own work. We want to celebrate the successes, but also recognize when we're not hitting the mark. We want to be, be really clear that we understand that although it's not always going to be an upward trajectory, and sometimes there'll be obstacles and challenges, we need to look at that and why. It's not about a gotcha, but what it is about is taking a step back and making corrections when the targets haven't been met. And finally, we're, we're, we're going to be focusing on outcomes. So bottom line is, if it's not resulting in changes that work better for children, then we know we haven't hit the mark, even if we're doing everything we said they were going to do. And I mentioned, the bottom line is usefulness for all of us. So here's that cycle of continuous improvement that I alluded to, and I'm just going to show you where we have designed this process to fit into this. So the first step is sort of self-assessment. So the superintendent, as soon as he got here, I think actually before he got here, started his self-assess, started the assessment process and worked with the, the leaders within to take a look at what was happening in the district. And we feel we've supported that process by providing data from, that the department provides to all districts, as well as the district review to support that analysis. So the second step has to do with the development and design of a plan that actually can hit the mark. So it, sort of, believe it or not, it's something that most organizations, not just school districts, struggle to do. So we're not talking about a plan that sits on a shelf, we're talking about one that's actionable from highest level, here's our big goal, to the lowest level, bam, in the classroom. And so the way it's designed, is the language is, three to four objectives, remember, we don't want a lot, because it won't be done. And each objective has two to four initiatives, and for each initiative, their concrete action steps, and then their measures, was it successful or not. So I mentioned the whole project management and follow-through aspect of that. Just wanted to say that the research shows that this is where most plans fall apart. So even if there is a, the plan that people want to use, the work isn't managed enough, just because it takes a lot of time to supervise all of these different folks who are responsible for different initiatives and work in, especially in districts, overlap. And that's why we provided a plan manager to be that person, to go out, make sure that all of the pieces are in place and on track, and report back to the superintendent. So we support the frequent monitoring of impacts through the monthly monitoring that's done. And so what that is, is that every single month, your superintendent and has sat down with his plan manager, Mike Guinan, is Mike here?
Mike's here.
Hi, Mike. And with your monitor here, Dr. Banda, and have talked about, hey, here's the progress we're seeing, here are the results, here's some of the challenges that we're facing. And then those, the results of those or turnout become, the notes from that meeting become highlight reports that Mr. Guinan provides for the team. So to the next, oops, why I was rolling with the smooth present, okay, there we go. Now we're back. And so the next step in the cycle is a place where we say, okay, sort of the, the quarter is ended, how did we do? It's, it's like a report card, if you will. But the purpose of this is to basically assess where we are, taking a look back at our, all of our hard results, and that's where we are, that's what we're doing tonight. So at the end of the year, there's also going to be a more summative report that captures the year-end review. But the quarterly reports cover periods of three months, so the report tonight is going to cover the period of September to December two thousand and eleven. We'll be back in April, if you'll have us, and that report will cover from January to March. And then the end-of-the-year report will cover from May to June. So this particular report tonight won't contain ratings, because the initial quarter is the, sort of the first step in implementation, and most districts are just getting things off the ground at this point. But future reports will have ratings on two areas, one, on the process, and the other, on the outcome. So by process, this is basically the actions. Are these actions that the districts have said they were going to do, are they doing it? And then there's the outcome. Okay, so is it making a difference? And we're looking, when we say outcome, we're looking for two things. We're looking for outcomes in terms of changes to the practice of staff at all levels, and hard data on that. And for outcomes for students, of course, we're looking for data on how well they're performing. So we have, I won't go through this slide, don't worry, but basically we have four kinds of benchmarks and outcomes that we're looking at, and they answer different questions for us. So one type of benchmark basically says, how will we know if we've done what we said we would do? Those are the action steps, whether they're done or not. The other kind of early benchmarks show us, okay, are we seeing early indication that practices are changing? And then, in the interim, we also want to see, okay, does it look like we're being successful so, so far, and are we on track to achieving at the end of the year those gains that we were looking for in MCAS, performance and growth, and so on? So we have, the, the plan requirement, sort of based on all of this, is that they meet these five criteria. And we are supporting and continuing to, to partner with the district in making sure that there's a really solid, clear plan in place. But in the meantime, implementation, of course, is, is still expected, because things don't stop. So all of, you play the, the key role, and so does your superintendent. And we have folks from the department that I've already introduced that play that role. So Linda Foizie, she's a Senior Associate Commissioner of Accountability Assistance. I'm the Associate Commissioner of Accountability. You have your plan manager, Mike Guinan, your plan and monitor, Nadine Banda. And we're also, we all started a new role called Lead Plan Developer, because basically if we don't have a plan in place at a certain point, we want to make sure we do everything that we can to lessen the burden and get that started in a way that everybody can feel like we're on the same page and moving forward. So we're going to launch right into the presentation of the quarterly progress report. And if you don't mind, I'd like to hold questions until after that report. Does that, does that feel okay? All right.
Good evening. I'd like to present the quarterly report to you. Southbridge Public Schools, under the direction of Superintendent Eric Ely, has submitted a draft accelerated improvement plan in order to meet the requirements of a Level Four school, district. While the accelerated improvement plan has not yet reached approval status, Superintendent Ely was instructed by the Office of Accountability at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that the district has an obligation to begin implementation on the strategic objectives through the implementation of the strategic initiatives as written, while the district continues to refine its plan with ongoing feedback provided to them. Although Southbridge has started work on some technical aspects that will prepare the district for implementation of its accelerated improvement plan, it has not met its obligation of strong plan implementation, as demonstrated by the lack of evidence that was submitted by the district to show plan implementation and growth in student achievement. There were three objectives. The first objective was to increase student achievement through outcomes-focused development of high-quality curriculum and instruction. The district defined three strategic initiatives to result in the accomplishment of this strategic Strategic Initiative One, align K-12 math and ELA curriculum to new Massachusetts frameworks and develop resources. The superintendent stated that the district purchased Atlas software as a platform on which to build its curriculum maps, which will align with the Massachusetts frameworks. The superintendent reported that he will introduce a process by which grade-level teams map what they are presently teaching, then compare that mapping with the Massachusetts frameworks, and finally make appropriate, appropriate adjustments. He also stated that he has a plan for forming teams and having them start curriculum mapping in the first two months of two thousand and twelve. Again, Superintendent Ely reported that in an effort to get the community involved in the work of the schools, in January, the district leadership team will invite community members to help define what high-quality instruction looks like. However, at this point, none of this work has begun. The superintendent began the process of doing learning walks last year. Superintendent Ely describes learning walks as the vehicle through which he hopes administrators and eventually teachers will be able to identify strengths and weaknesses in instruction and in services offered to students. At this point, the early evidence outlined in the plan of learning walks, providing evidence of aligned curriculum and resources in the classroom, has not occurred. There was no evidence provided of a developed protocol for doing learning walks, reports of what was observed on the walks or how the results of learning walks are being used. Strategic Initiative Number Two, strengthen supports in the classroom to facilitate learning and success for all students, targeting, targeting individual student needs. All administrators and some teachers have received initial training in response to intervention, or the RTI model. Additionally, the superintendent stated that professional development on differentiated instruction has recently been offered to some teachers to support Tier One practices. It was reported by the superintendent that RTI training was begun for special education school-based support teams last year by the Director of Special Education. The superintendent reported that special education services are, whenever possible, provided in an inclusion model. The superintendent also stated that he has been meeting with the Director of English Language Learners, ELL, to identify strategies to improve services and learning for ELL students. However, no evidence was submitted that would show that the results of meetings with the ELL director or that RTI training is a priority for administrators in their schools or is having an effect in individual classrooms. Strategic Initiative Number Three, challenge and inspire all stakeholders through increased rigor and elevated and clear expectations. Examples of early evidence of change, including agenda and minutes of district leadership meetings that provide evidence of tight focus on curriculum, instruction, and assessment, were not provided as evidence. There were no documents submitted that demonstrate a clear clarity of communication regarding high expectations for student work. And although learning walks are being done in the district, as evidenced by the schedule that was developed for learning walks, there was no evidence provided to show that those learning walks have resulted in greater rigor in the classroom or higher expectations for students. In addition, there was no evidence that a community advisory or a student advisory team had been developed as described. In summary, strategic objective number one, increase student achievement through outcomes-focused development of high-quality curriculum and instruction, has barely begun to be implemented. The need for improved student achievement makes work on this initiative imperative. Strategic objective number two, productive collaboration and shared responsibility for all stakeholders through team building. The district defined three strategic initiatives that would together result in the accomplishment of strategic objective two. Strategic initiative number one, develop and support math and ELA teams to align curriculum, develop resources, and support implementation. The superintendent stated that the district is in the process of putting in place math and ELA teams to align curriculum, develop resources, and support implementation of new curriculum, and that members of these teams would represent all grade levels. The superintendent stated that he would not have these teams working until the first two months of two thousand and twelve. There was no evidence provided that these teams have been organized, nor were there examples of work products from meetings to align curriculum documents and resources, as was stated in the plan's early evidence of change section for this initiative. Although there was listed in the plan as early evidence, agenda, and minutes of district leadership team meetings that provide evidence of a tight focus on curriculum, instruction, and assessment, there was no evidence turned in to show that that had occurred. Strategic initiative number two, develop data teams in schools to inform the target instruction and school-based support teams to guide implementation of integrated classroom support structures. Minutes of a district data team meeting facilitated by the District and School Assistance Center, that's called the DSAC, showed a team that is in place and has met twice. Minutes show that the team is in the process of deciding how data should be presented to schools and how teachers and grade-level teams can best use it. The district data team discussed data use at schools and concluded that data teams are in place in some schools, with at least one school having had a data team in place for some time. However, they will need to conduct a review of how data is being used in each school. Lack of evidence regarding agendas and minutes of district leadership team meetings and a lack of data from learning walks make it impossible to determine how either of those mechanisms supports this initiative. Strategic initiative number three, develop... Strategic Initiative Number Three, develop processes for district-level leadership team to provide strategic guidance to all initiatives, including development of student engagement and community engagement teams. Lack of evidence made it impossible to determine if there is early evidence of change for this initiative. For example, there was no evidence of a structure being established for the district leadership team meetings to drive monitoring, guidance, and support functions. And, as stated above, lack of evidence regarding agendas and minutes of district leadership team meetings and a lack of data from learning walks made it impossible to determine how either of those mechanisms supports this initiative. In summary, Objective Two, productive collaboration and shared responsibility for all stakeholders through team building, is in the very beginning stages. Learning walks have begun, but a protocol must be developed and a mechanism for providing feedback must be developed. The district leadership team must be given the opportunity to grapple with difficult issues and must take ownership over the plan itself and implementation of the plan. An aligned curriculum must be developed and teachers must be trained in using it. And data teams in each school and at the district level must become proficient in using data to inform instruction. Strategic Objective Number Three, mutual accountability for all stakeholders. The district defined three strategic initiatives that would together result in the accomplishment of strategic objective number three. First, Strategic Initiative Number One, develop formative assessment systems aligned to new curriculum. A lack of evidence regarding agendas and minutes of district leadership team meetings and a lack of data from learning walks makes it impossible to determine how either of those mechanisms supports this initiative. There was no evidence that Galileo testing was implemented in October, as described in the plan action steps, nor was there evidence that data was analyzed by inquiry teams at each school. There have been a series of emails between ANET and an administrator to discuss possible implementation in grades three to eight of ANET's formative assessment system, but not until the fall of 2012. There are discussions that ANET may provide embedded professional development coaching for data teams to make sense of and determine how best to use the data to begin to inform instruction. However, this process is still in the discussion stage and no implementation has begun. Strategic Initiative Number Two, develop capacity for all stakeholders to participate productively in learning walks. The superintendent reported that principals participated last August in the first half-day training on learning walks. However, that training has not been completed, nor has staff participated in any training on learning walks. There was no evidence provided that a learning walk protocol, as called for in Strategic Initiative 1.1, was developed. There was evidence provided of a calendar for walkthroughs through the end of May of this year. However, as called for in the early evidence of change for this initiative, that calendar neither called for broader participation nor set a focus for specific learning walks. Notes were not provided from learning walk debriefs that would provide evidence of broad-based participation, integrated services, and differentiated instructional practices informed by work of data and school-based support teams, as well as elevated expectations for instruction and student performance, as outlined in the district plan. Strategic Initiative Number Three, district-level leadership team. There were no agenda and minutes provided from the district-level leadership team meetings that would provide any evidence of tight focus on curriculum, instruction, and assessment, including development of process and standards, a rubric or dashboard, to evaluate function and productivity of curriculum development, data, and school-based support teams, as well as self-evaluation of district leadership team and strategic marshaling of resources and supports to assist teams. In summary, strategic objective number three, mutual accountability for all stakeholders, is in the discussion stage and must move to clear planning and implementation. A benchmark assessment process must be put in place. Learning walks need to have a focus and accountability, and the district leadership team must be shown to focus on curriculum, instruction, and assessment in order for progress to be made on this objective. In sum, Southbridge has barely begun work on its accelerated improvement plan, and any work that has been done is of a purely technical nature. It is imperative that progress be made in order for the district to reach its ambitious goals for students. There is an urgency to implementation of the components of this plan in order to introduce the mechanisms by which Southbridge will see improved student achievement.
So I know that was a lot to digest. Before we start questions, there's our, there are three big takeaways that we are hoping to communicate. So one is that Southbridge does not yet have a strong plan in place that can guide implementation. And there's little evidence that what has been submitted as a plan has been implemented. The other big takeaway is that it's imperative that progress be made in order for Southbridge to reach ambitious goals for students. So in other words, the work of the district must clearly have impacts at the classroom level. So the district to the five schools, what's going to be different for those five schools, for the 180 or so teachers, and then beat that to the approximately 2,200 students. So in other words, what's going, what's going to have improved for the third-grade student? What's going to have improved for the grade-eight math teacher? The third takeaway is that regular monitoring and adjustments need to be made as we have data like this that shows that the target hasn't been reached. We need to identify those barriers, and we need to make sure that eventually there's a strong plan in place, and quickly, not eventually, a strong plan in place, and that it's being implemented with fidelity and quickly, and that the end result is outcomes for students. So, that's why, for our part, we are providing this extra support of a Level Four Plan Developer. This is one that has assisted the process in another district, but will be taking a more leadership role to solidify the plan here in Southbridge. So, that's where we are. Want to open it up to questions? If, if that's okay with the chair?
Yep, it's fine. Questions from anyone?
Mr. Guegoro? Could you describe what leadership role this individual will be taking in this plan?
Yeah. So, up to this point, the role that we provided was the support of a Plan Manager. And that's Mike, and so he's worked with the superintendent to craft the ideas into the format of the plan. Because we didn't want the superintendents to have to become experts on like this plan format. The Lead Plan Developer will be able to provide some guidance from examples of the objectives, initiatives, action steps, and benchmarks that have met the criteria, those five criteria that we laid out before, so that Southbridge can meet that as well, and provide some exemplars of how, what structures were put in place to move it along quickly. So, you know, improvement planning is something that most districts are, and superintendents are used to, but accelerated improvement planning ramps it up. And so we want to make sure that Southbridge has the support to ramp it up. And so that person will be taking a more guiding role.
Yes, ma'am.
Or that organization, I should say, will be taking more guiding role.
What type of, what kind of timeframe are we talking about?
Yeah, so, we are looking to have this in place by the end of April.
I, I think I can actually, I, I believe we have a group of people working on that next week.
Starting next week.
Actually, we've been working on it already. A lot of the documentation that was absent in this report has already been, the, the formats are in place to, to start gathering some evidence that, that we weren't sure we needed. But the actual Plan Manager and the, the new role person will be working together next week to, to put it in a format that makes it easier for us to document the things that we are doing. Because a lot of the things we're doing, we're just not documenting them to the level we should be.
And so just to, just to clarify, the date for the revised plan to be submitted will be April the 2nd. And so when we come back in April for the next Quarterly Progress Report, we'll be able to report out on the progress to date, on the, on the activities to lead to achievement, and where the plan is at that point.
Yosse.
Uh, last question.
No, no, that's fine. Continue.
Okay. A lot of, of a lot of what's been written here seems to rest on lack of documentation. That, that was repeated, you know, quite a bit throughout this presentation, that there's a lack of documentation, that this has taken place or that has taken place. So, it would seem to fall that, follow that because of lack of documentation, a lot of this report is incomplete. Would that be correct?
No. The emphasis that we're making here is that this is an evidence-based report. And, so, if there's no evidence of progress and achievement, then there is no progress and achievement. And what we understood, what we've learned is that these action, these objectives are not fully underway, on, on track.
So, I, I guess I don't understand. If there's no documentation, then there's no evidence. And if there's no evidence of something taking place, then the perception would be that it's not happening.
Right, I'll give you an example. If a curriculum document was supposed to be produced and there is no curriculum document, then it hasn't been done. If there is supposed to be a change in student achievement and there's no change, there's no evidence of change. So, I don't want to get hung up on the, on the language, but I'll give a chance for the monitor to also say.
I just wanted to add that we were not only looking for written documents, but the monitors met with the superintendent on a monthly basis, and every month we went over what has been accomplished in the district, what needs to be accomplished, what are you going to be doing for the next month, what are the obstacles that stand in the way. So there was a thorough opportunity for whatever was being done to be presented at that time as well.
Thank you. Ms. La.
Just a, I, I was going to ask the same question. What is the definition of accelerated? How fast does it happen? How quick? What is expected? We've been aligning curriculum for quite a while. We, the district and the school committee has put together a curriculum team, a director and subject areas. We've done a tremendous amount of, under the Hanley, Dale Hanley, we did a tremendous amount of professional development, training, leadership, administration, changes, 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 changes. Assess, assess, assess. Test, test, test. No sooner than, we have our teachers coming to us saying, "Well, we just got this down pat, now we got to change it, we got to do this, we got to do that, we got to do this." We're hearing from our own people on the ground that, you know, I'm frustrated, okay? I'm ready to say, "Why don't you two come here and you run this district and let the state take it over and clean it up? And do the wonderful things what you do with union contracts and stuff like that, and then after, maybe it can accelerate itself, and really it'll be an accelerated plan." Because the way it's happening, I've been here through three superintendents, and I'm sure that there'll probably be a fourth not too shortly. But, I'm sitting here and I'm frustrated. I do want to do the right thing for the kids, and I do believe in planning. And I, I do that in the private sector, but we don't do things in the private sector as we do in the system, but we, we follow the rules because that's what we have to do. I'm very frustrated. I'm very frustrated with the curriculum department after what I'm hearing here today. I'm very frustrated with the superintendent and administration. I don't feel good about all the work we've done, and I'm not sure what the answer is. What if, this is the question, what if there's no progress in six months? What does the state do?
All right. So I think you asked four questions. Let me see if I got them. So one is, what does accelerated mean? Another was more of a point that you're frustrated. The other is that it feels like we're continuing to have to do things over and over to improve. And the fourth was, what's going to happen if we don't meet the target? So let me, let me take each, each one of those, sort of one by one. So, the first one is, what does accelerated mean? So we're making the distinction between an improvement plan that is about maintaining current levels of performance by getting a little bit better every year. That's what is required by, for all districts. Each district in the state needs to have an improvement plan because we are still working as a state in closing proficiency gaps. And the, under the old NCLB and now the new waiver we have in place, we're still expecting there to be continuous growth, and as a state, we have been continuously growing in achievement. Accelerated ramps it up. It recognizes that a district's performance can be much, much better, and that it will require more than the normal amount of effort to ramp that up. What you had in place before under Dr. Hanley represented those steps. So the kind of pace is sort of, speaks to, let me, go to the third question. The kind of pace that we're constantly, you know, trying to get better and better, we're revising the curriculum, we're doing the professional development and all of that, that is something that we do expect to continue until the system is at the place where we consider it, we all, and I mean, we meaning you, sustainable. And so by sustainable, it means that if tomorrow the superintendent leaves, or tomorrow that principal leaves, or tomorrow that amazing classroom teacher of your child leaves, that the next teacher that comes in will be able to take it from there without interruption. So that is, that is about getting a system that's so tight that you don't have to be on the ball at an accelerated pace and excellent 100% of the time in order to be successful. So it's about a system change. To, it does mean, though, to be clear, though, all districts we're expecting to improve. So we expect all districts to be, all districts in the state are revising its, their curriculum now. We've ramped up the standards. So we have a new curriculum framework, and it's, we're increasing expectations. We're closing the achievement gap, so we're expecting new supports and better supports for English language learners and students in poverty. So here's, here's where we are. I think that for the, the folks who work here, they feel that they, they're already in need, they already do that anyway. Meaning, each teacher expects their students, students can't say, "Okay, I'm going to stop learning now, I've done enough of this test stuff, I've done enough of this learning stuff." But they're continuing, and that's what we are asking. So that speaks to that, that cycle of improvement. It's a cycle because it doesn't end, but we are saying that we're looking for it to be sped up. So to get to the frustration piece, I get it. I, I get it. That's why we're here, because we could adjust, sort of send a report and saying, "Okay, here's, here's what we're finding, and then here are, here's how the commissioner is going to use his authority after that." That's not what we're here to do. We're here, out of respect to you as a governing body, to say, "Here are the needs from folks who are in education and who've been in it and who've been following Southbridge for a long time." Not the kind of investment in local knowledge that you all have, I'm not saying that, but want to be here to help and partner. We understand that it's, it's aggressive process, we understand it's hard, but that's exactly what we believe that the district can do, and we are working to support that.
Okay. I like the word "ramp it up." Hard work, I'm not afraid of, that's all I know how to do is hard work and, and push. But when you ramp it up for all the districts, and you're the Southbridge School District, and you're like an inner-city type district, and you have been labeled underperforming by the state, and you have been, basically, I call it, thrown under the bus in the early stages, which created a vacuum of teachers not wanting to come here, then you have school choice mass exit of students with that label, then you don't have people in the pools that want to work here to come in. So then we turn around and we go through all the hoops that the state has put forward, which, I don't mind doing the hard work. What I don't like doing is spinning my wheels. As a school committee member, as a business person, or just- As a school committee member, as a business person, or just as a father, I don't spin my wheels for anybody and I feel like I'm spinning my wheels. We talk about money, union contracts. We do everything in Southbridge. We try our best to stretch the dollar. We understand we needed management. We have more management people now than ever before. And still, we're going to get another plan, we're going to go through some more hoops to find out whatever happens six months from now. I think we've worked very hard. Our teachers work harder than Sturbridge, harder than Shepherd Hill, because we have tougher demographics. We do push, push, push. Our teachers have been asked to do things in curriculum, "Oh, let's go with everyday math." Okay, another PhD comes in and says, "Everyday math is going to solve the problem." Now we've got somebody else coming in with a PhD saying, "No, that's not what you've got to do. What we're going to do is we're going to change it to this." When you sit here as a business person, you look how an educational process works in the state of Massachusetts. That's what creates the frustration. It's not the employees or the parents in this district. We're all working hard for the right thing. But the minute we want to push forward and all of a sudden we feel like we went back two steps, that's the frustration point that I'm experiencing. And we will move on, we will push forward, we will make the decisions we're supposed to make. And we hope that we, you know, get out of underperforming. I've been here, I'm chairman of the building committee. One of the big portions was, one of our buildings needed an upgrade and one needed to be replaced. So we moved and I spent a lot of time in this. I believe in Southbridge and that we're going in the right direction. The frustration comes in when you create a curriculum team and you're paying hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in salaries, you're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions in your district. And then somebody comes in and just says, "No, that's not right, we're going to start doing this." Whether it be race to the top, left no child behind, the politics that changes the channel on educators in certain sectors creates frustration not only for the employees. Oh, let's go to another district, it'll be easier and you'll get more money. And then what are we left with? This is the frustration that I've been experiencing and I don't know if Boston feels the same way about we feel here at home, but we're going to do whatever we have to do. We will always have a superintendent, we always have teachers here. But I'm to the point now where if the state continues to come down and says, "You're not doing it right, you're not doing it right," I think we have to cut to the chase, go into receivership and solve the problem once and for all. It's been a long road and I just don't think continuing to spin wheels is the answer. Thank you.
Dr. O'Leary.
Hi, ladies, thanks for your time. I can echo, as probably many of us kind of same frustrations that Mr. Lozo articulates for you. This is pretty abysmal, as far as I can tell, and a report to get. You're just the messenger, not the, you didn't do it. So I sit here like everyone else has. I feel like we've been putting so much into this, over and over, for not a month, or two months, or six months. This is a number of years now. And for us to think that we're doing all these things the way we're supposed to and come back and get this, this looks like failure one, two, three, four, all right down. This is a failure so far. So you have expertise, you all have expertise in getting districts to work well. You know districts that work well, you know what works in districts that work well. So you must know where things fail. So take some of your time and expertise and help me, help me find that too. Did I fail here, Tom O'Leary? Did I fail in the school committee? Did we fail in the school committee? Was it our administrators? Is it our teachers? Is it our superintendent? You tell me. We have years put into this now. I mean, hard work, a lot. And to have fail, 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 not even close to something that's acceptable to such a degree. You're not talking about nuances, guys. You're talking, this hasn't been met, hasn't been met, hasn't been met. On four counts, you have to have an idea of where the failure is, guys. And how can we go forward if everyone can say, "I don't know, I don't know, let's try this, let's try that, I don't know, I don't know." So help us out, help me out with that. If it's me, you let me know. If it's someone else, we need to find this out, guys. We can't keep, like Mr. Lozo says, spinning, spinning, spinning. We've been, it's a long time, a lot of money. And to be at this spot, this is like the first day that this happened. We all know it was abysmal and here it is, you're telling us it's abysmal.
So a couple of things I want to make sure are clear. This is about, this report of one quarter in terms of the progress, which we haven't seen. And this is a report that also described the fact that there's not a plan in place that's strong yet. It is frustrating for everyone when everyone who's working hard, and it sounds, my understanding is everybody's working hard, that's not the issue. But you're not getting the results that you're looking for. And that's what we want to fix. We want to see those outcomes go up so that the results of all of you and even more so the teachers in the classroom, when they know they're working hard and they're not getting the results. We have to look at how things are organized and implemented from the district level down. I wouldn't say that we have failed over the last few years. When you look at, if you reflect back, we just came in October and we came to share with you that we saw a great deal of evidence that systems had gotten stronger in Southbridge Public Schools. That means that there's a foundation to build upon. So those work of those teachers, looking at those MCAS results, I think it was Dr. Hanley first came here, and they really got into looking at the data and they looked at their curriculum and thought about how they could make sure that they included the components that would allow them to teach the same things to students in the same way so that students would improve. That work isn't wasted. That built the capacity of these teachers. These teachers are stronger now. But the question is, how can the district give more support for the continuous improvement that we expect of teachers? This is what we expect of teachers. The continuous improvement that we expect of the schools and that falls on the principals and then back mapping that, of course, into the continuous improvement that we're expecting at the central office level to provide support for those schools and ultimately those teachers so the teachers can do the best job for kids. So we're here, we're sticking with you until we see the results. Because we want to make sure that these efforts, these hard efforts, are achieving the kind of outcomes that we're all looking for.
If I could just add to that. One of the things that we charged the superintendent and his district leadership team with was looking at the progress that has already been made and saying, "Where does Southbridge have to go from this point?" And that's what this plan is all about. So that's the plan that the superintendent and his district leadership team put in place to keep that progress going. And what we're saying tonight is that there was not evidence that this plan was enacted. So you've come to a certain level, but now how are you going to get to the next level? We agreed with the strategic objectives that were outlined in the plan, that those could work if the strategic initiatives were strong and if there were outcomes that were looked up, outcomes and action steps that were looked at for each of those strategic initiatives and that there was the continued effort to work in those areas. So this isn't our plan. This is the plan that was put together in the district to move the district forward. And we think those strategic objectives and strategic initiatives are good ones. But they're not being implemented, we're not seeing evidence, we're not seeing strong action steps, and we're not seeing strong indicators that this is occurring.
If I could just follow up, ladies. Thank you, ma'am. You commented that this just represents one quarter, that it represents one quarter for you all looking at this. It represents, getting to this point, to me represents a number of years of trying to get here. And again, for my own, to have this as a result of those years is really disheartening. So I don't really understand where you went with this part. It seems like you reiterated how you got to here, how you came to this conclusion, but it still doesn't tell me, I think I gleaned that it's not the teachers. So take them off the table.
We didn't conduct an evaluation, this about the plan and implementation.
I'm sorry?
I said, "We didn't conduct an evaluation of instruction as part of this. We're looking at the district plan and its implementation and we want, when we come back in April, to have an entirely different report to share with you."
Yeah, I certainly do too. I think I can speak for everyone. I'm frightened that, I'm anxious that we won't be able to. All that's gone into, all we've done, and to get this is, as I said, I'll keep harping on it, that it's just, it's really disheartening and discouraging to think that all we have done has gotten to this failing mark. And I personally need something to go forward with. Is it a whole new plan? Then we've wasted all this time and haven't gotten anywhere? No, I need direction. If I'm supposed to leave this board because it was me, then great. Or if this school committee needs to change, then maybe that's it. But to say, "Well, the plan didn't work, guys," you have to have something more than that for us.
And so we have two things. One, we understand that you all, in having this information, will have to go back and regroup and figure out how can we do better. And that's something that you all have the knowledge to do. For us, on our part, we're providing a lead that can use the lessons learned from others that were successful in doing this, also a district with similar kinds of challenges, so that you can get it right down to making things better for kids.
Mr. Guevara.
You know, it's ironic that less than an hour, just about an hour ago, we had people standing at that podium, talking about the new school and getting, you know, word out. And I was sitting here and I was thinking about how a couple, about a week ago, I'm walking over to my car after going to the gym with a guy and his kid, his kid's in the sixth grade. And I asked him where he was planning on going in a couple of years when he got to high school. He said, "I'm going to go to Tantasco." And I asked the father, "Well, why is he going to Tantasco? We've got this fantastic school being built, millions and millions of dollars." And the answer was, "You've got the same teachers in that school that you have at the old school." And I told the father, "Well, you know what? If they're able to teach to the high quality that they are at a school as rundown as the one they're in now, can you imagine the miracles they can do at the new school?" And then I look at this and the summary of the key concerns, "The written plan is not clear enough to serve as a foundation. The plan currently doesn't quickly target the instructional core. It's not clear how the plan will address root causes of low achievement. Benchmark for early evidence of change goes, will not provide clear information to the I like the speakers before me also, you know, would like it, you know, clearly stated that this is not a reflection on the teachers. Because I think, you know, quite frankly, and excuse my French, that our teachers are a hell of a good lot. That they've gone through some damn hard stuff in the last decade. They've had to listen to other teachers from other schools put down this school. The coaches have had to do the same thing. These guys have worked in the trenches for a long period of time. And to see this, the average person, you know, listening tonight, or even if they were to take this, like we have, and read this, you immediately assume it's, you know, not just this plan, but it's the teachers that have somehow failed. And that's not the case. That's just simply not the case. The teachers haven't failed. We are, you know, I've been on this board for almost 10 years, it seems like five decades. And to see this, you know, I'm exactly like the previous speaker, it's disheartening. I don't know what else, you know, we can possibly do as a board. We're not educators here. We, you know, have limited amount of power and respect to how we move forward on this because we're not in the trenches every day implementing this. We can accept different key concerns and different ways of changing things and put forth, you know, what we feel is correct, but implementation's not going to come from me. It's not going to happen from me. So am I frustrated? Oh, to say the least. To think about, you know, if I was a parent and I had a kid who was going into the high school and someone handed this to me, I don't care if there's a Taj Mahal being built in Southbridge. I'd have to give it, you know, a double look before I did anything. This doesn't really leave us, it doesn't really say anything positive. It says basically, while you're at the, you know, you kind of have walked up to the door but you keep refusing to open it. That's what it seems to say to me.
So I think that that's a fair assessment with one caveat, and that is, to be clear, you are quoting from the letter we provided. In no way are we assessing the capacity of teachers here. So the letter that you are quoting from, what we're saying is actually, in order to support teachers in doing the best job, here are some of the things that teachers need the district to provide to schools, for the schools to provide to teachers, through the principals. Definition of high-quality instruction, clarity on the plan so that they can see, that can be used in communication tools, they can see how they fit into this whole scheme of district to school to what they're expected to do. They need to understand clearly how RTI is going to be implemented across the grades. They need support in using data. They need to see the steps that ensure that they will have the curriculum that's clear and easy to use on a day-to-day basis so that they can ensure the students can meet the standards. They need supports for those students who aren't keeping track with that curriculum map so that they can put their students back on track. They need more support and feedback to improve instruction. And by improving instruction, I mean, as the challenges increase, so much better does our practice need to be. And they need support for improving the learning outcomes of students who are still learning English. They also, there are other things. But what we're looking, what we're talking, speaking about is how teachers can be supported in meeting the challenges they face every day through the way that the schools and the district support them, so that they can reach those 2,200 students when they're in the trenches.
Mr. Lozo.
I'm just going to go out on a limb and say I disagree with a lot of what your report says. I'm just going to go out there and say that, I think I've been on school committee as long as you've been in education. So I'm going to go out on a limb and say, when the state said, "We need a technology," Southbridge put up a million dollars in technology across the district. When the state said, "You need a new high school, middle school," we went out, town council, community, everybody, and built a $74 million middle high school. Of course, they want to tell us how to run it and tell us who to put in there and who to appoint for superintendent and that didn't work. So to me, I'm sitting here today, as frustrated as ever. I think that I'm going to stand up for my district and my town and tell Big Brother, "Nice try, we're going to keep working at it, but I don't think you're ever going to take us out underperforming." And every time you have a report card like this, we will see more kids exiting Southbridge. So if you think you're helping, I don't think you are. Thank you.
Dr. Deminko.
Thank you, ladies, for being here. I don't even know where to start. I've been listening to my colleagues on the board and I'm not frustrated, I'm downright angry. I have been on this board for seven years now.
Can you just speak into the mic? I can't hear you.
I have been on this board for seven years now. And, you know, reassurance to all of us who may have doubts right now, we have done a lot of good. And you have heard pieces from technology to curricular development to teams, left, right, and center. We have done so much in the last five years that I really agree that we have a very good foundation, very good foundation. From what I'm hearing tonight, though, it appears to me that you have received absolutely nothing from us within the last year, year and a half. And that bothers me to no end. Because starting in 2005, when Dr. Hanley joined, we have been on a rant with massive restructuring across the board, and you know that. You have seen what has been done. What bothers me and what I would like an answer from you, especially Dr. Bonda, you have been here monthly, you have been in contact with us. What have you received from us?
I can tell you that I received six pieces of evidence that included some emails, perhaps an agenda. I don't have those with me right now. But they were not, the documents were not enough for me to say that any of this had been implemented, that the plan that was put together by the superintendent and his district leadership team was implemented. I did talk to them on a monthly basis and they talked about what they were going to do. But at the end of three months, I needed to see evidence that there were things in place. And I don't think that the foundation has been shaken at any level. That's not what we're talking about, that there is a foundation here that can be built upon. But we're saying, was the next step taken? And we don't yet have evidence that that- And we don't yet have evidence that that next step was taken.
Thank you for that explanation. I, I have a very similar feeling. I have a feeling we have just lost time. Not only have we lost time, we have lost a lot of money investing into curricular and instructional and assessment department that clearly hasn't done absolutely anything that can be documented. And my mom always told me, "It doesn't matter how hard you work, show me what you have done." And I agree with you. You should be judging us on what we can provide as evidence. That's how real world works. You can't take anybody's word that they have done well. Show me. I agree. I completely agree. What bothers me that we can't produce any evidence that we have accomplished anything in, in the past time. And we, as a school committee, have to sort that within our body and with the powers that we have over the policy and over finances and probably the contact of, content of our administrative teams and anybody else that should have been part of this process. This is nothing against you. I share frustrations with Mr. Lazo about, you know, changing frameworks and reframing, and you call it any kind of frame you want. We have gone through all of them, and you'll keep doing it and we'll have to adjust. It's just the way it works. It's not the best. So I have frustrations on that side. But this does not in any way excuse our administration and our curriculum department for what we're seeing here. How are we supposed to improve? How are principals supposed to run their buildings? How are our students supposed to perform? If we can't document what we're doing, we're not doing anything. We can't produce minutes. We can't produce conversation reports. What was discussed? This is atrocious. Where we were a year and a half ago, when Dr. Hanley left, was a good place. It was a place where we knew, all of us, where we can go. I still feel we can do it. I, I'm just really upset that we have lost time. And a lot of energy and a lot of trust of the community, new school coming online. I mean, there's, this is, you must know how discouraging this has to be. You must know. This cannot be the only occasion when you're hearing this. I, I, I'm just, I don't know what to say. Not to you, but to our superintendent, to our curriculum department, and probably other support services, special education, ELL people. We have support, any support anybody ever wanted, we have provided. We have bought everything that was requested. We have never denied anything to this school department. And this, this is what we get? Just like behaving like it's lottery money? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm just gonna shut up now and collect myself. Thank you.
Mrs. Woodruff, then Mr. Ely, then Mr. Lazo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you ladies for coming and giving us this report. People probably won't agree with me, but I look at things a little bit differently. Am I frustrated? Yes, I am frustrated. We've been on, you know, I've also been here seven years. But I, when I read this report, I looked at it as a tool, not necessarily a report card, as a lot of our fellow people have looked up up here. I looked at it as a tool, and I looked at it as our tools that we have in place are just not working, that we've hit a bump in the road. And we have gone over bumps before, as you well know, with the improvement plans before this time. And I look at it as this is being a report to show us that we need to work a little bit harder with our tools that we have in place, to tweak the tools, not to tweak the teachers. The teachers do wonderful jobs, we've all agreed on that. You know, so we don't want the teachers to, to feel bad or anyone to feel bad from this report. So I look at it as a tool, and I think we all need to look at it as a tool, and we need to look at our tools and, and decide which tools were the right ones that we did choose and which tools were not the right one. And although we are all frustrated and angry, we need to still keep ourselves calm and together, and we can do it. We've done it before, we can get over this hump and do it. And I, I just think that it was nice for you ladies to come and give us this report. Again, a lot of it is, you're the messengers, you're not, you know, you're the messengers of what you have seen. Three months is not, in my opinion, a lot of time to gather a lot of reports to give that evidence that you're looking for. I know that I'm in the buildings here and there, I know that it is working. It's just we're not producing what you're looking for to see that it is working. And I think that we just need, as a team, to tweak the tools and get that information out that we have collected and we do have in a faster manner so that the state can see that we are doing the job. Thank you.
Ms. Ely.
Yeah, first of all, let me thank you for being here this evening. And I share the frustration, I probably feel more frustration than most people up here, believe it or not. Because I know that the things that are in the accelerated improvement plan were, as developed by our entire administrative team, along with a number of teachers in our system, are the things that we believe in as a school system that are important. And I think what, like you're, you're Dr. Mitchell saying is, the things that we're looking at, the strategic initiatives, those things are important, the objectives and goals and things that we're trying to do are important and, and have value and will make the change. Our failing, if we're failing, is in documenting all the things that we are doing. And the documentation has become increasingly important, obviously. And I, and I could, could go through this report and tell you things that aren't documented that we are doing, that we have documentation for, that we didn't provide, and ultimately it's our responsibility as an administrative leadership team to make sure that, that the state gets that, and they will. And they will get it in, in short order because the things that they say in this report that aren't documented, don't, don't take the, don't have the assumption that they're not being done. I think the problem that we have is in gathering data and gathering information. And as I understand it, actually the weakness of the plan is in that specific identification of that data that the state wants to see. And this guidance document, as I look at it, which really documents the things that we need to be keeping and how to rewrite our plan so that it does meet the needs of the state, and a quarter from now, I think we'll see that we have made the changes, and we've been making them for, forever, as you say, since before I came here and since I've been here, we've made a lot of changes. And I think the accelerated improvement plan, the initiatives are ongoing. The documentation is not following it, and I apologize for that. I don't apologize for the plan. I refuse to apologize for the plan because the plan was developed cohesively with our staff. Our staff, our administration, our teachers believe that the things that we're working on work and will work for kids. And it is making changes at the classroom level. Our only problem is how we document that to the state, and, and I think this actually gives us a little better handle on how to do that. The, the plan itself, the teachers work hard, the administrators work hard at all levels. The school committee, obviously, is very, very committed to the school district and to the kids, and we appreciate all of that. I could take issue for hours with this report. I chose not to take issues with the report because I think it tells everybody in the community what we need to work on, which is documentation, keeping records, keeping the agendas, the agendas of our department, of our leadership team meetings I have in my office. Quite frankly, didn't know they needed them. Had I known they needed them, they could have had them immediately. But, but this accelerated improvement plan process is relatively new. We're, we're learning with it as we go. So I think that, that we certainly will take this document and address our administrative oversight in terms of, of keeping records. And if, if nothing else, we need to document the things that we are doing because in this district, the teachers, the administrators, the principals, curriculum assessment department, you know, have we revised curriculum maps? Absolutely, we have curriculum, we have curriculum revisions, we have a new district literacy plan that, that should have been part of the documentation to this. We, we have a ton of things that are documented, and we just simply didn't provide them for whatever reason. But we will rectify that situation, and probably your next meeting be getting boxes of documentation on some of this stuff. Because it is happening, and good things are happening in our buildings at the classroom level, at the building level, and at the district level. So I don't want you to feel, as, as a board, that you've let the community down, and I, and I don't feel like I've let the community down. I feel like I don't think I've let you down. I think we have done the things we said we were going to do. We need to do a better job of documenting, not only to the state, but also to our community, as we heard from Mrs. McLaughlin this evening, and we need to document them better to you. Thank you.
Mr. Lazo.
You know, one other issue, while we have you here, there was, there was an in-depth discussion on management of the new high school, middle school. I, as the chairman of the building committee and a school committee member, worked diligently with the members here and, and the council to sell to the community a one-plan centralized services, which would be shared services as in nursing and maybe guidance, library, athletics. And then we said that there will be a middle school concept in the middle school, and then there'll be the high school, and we'll, and we'd promise the citizens that the sixth, seventh, and eighth would be in two separate pods. And then we're gonna go in with our two principals, one who is experienced in, in the high school area and one that's at the middle school area. And then it was brought to us that we need one administrator, or one name of the high school. And we turned around and said, "How do you tell the people in your community, this is what we're building, this is why we're doing it, and all the studies for the last nine years said to administrators, to, to offices? The building is built with two names on it, middle school to the right, high school, towers separated, entrances separated, with centralized services to kinda keep the community, our school concept of servicing the public, and also sharing to save some money on the tax, with the taxpayers." And then the superintendent, in, in a very heavy debate with the school committee, said that we needed to have one, and DESE wanted us to have one administrator. And I sat there and I said, "Wait a minute, I just, tonight, Dr. Mitchell, you were saying about broadening the management." And I'm, I'm kind of, again, my frustration comes up. We go in with people telling us in the beginning with Dr. Hanley and DESE that this was the concept, good concept, it's gonna work fine. The players have changed, and all of a sudden now we need one manager over the plan. Well, it's not gonna happen. I mean, we'll give you a name if you need it, but the school committee has worked diligently to create this management plan, so we would have further definition down below of what you're looking for, what actually happens on the middle school level, what actually happens on the high school level, instead of just one person delegating out, so to speak, with more of a hands-on approach. So again, tonight, that's another issue that I sit here and say, spent nine years working on this building, and not many of us are still on the committee, a building committee that started the project. And I always tell my good friend, my colleague, the chairman, "You have to know the history in order, it's your best teacher, so let's not go make those same mistakes that we made." So I don't know if that is one of your recommendations, to have one administrator at the high school. That's the way it was put to me and to the school committee, that DESE wants this.
What I said, just, just to clarify, I'm sorry, just to clarify. What I said was, Dr. Mitchell had told me in an email that DESE traditionally would take two schools, put them together under one accountability status. That's what I said. And I said, "In my mind, as a superintendent and as an educator, I believe you can only have one captain at the helm of a ship. I don't think you can have two principals in one building. I don't believe it works. I've seen it tried and I've seen it not work." But, and we had that debate, we had that debate, and the school committee did not approve that job description, is my understanding. So Dr. Mitchell actually getting put in the middle of, of that situation locally, and I, and I want to apologize to her for that because I did use her email because traditionally, and this just happens across the country, under NCLB, when two buildings go together as one, the accountability status of that building tends, is, is the cumulative effect of what, what those students have performed in their previous two buildings. And that's the way DESE has done it in the past, I know, but I'll let her answer the rest of that.
Dr. Mitchell, before, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to respond because I'm on this specific topic, but as a point of clarification, when the meeting took place, we did ask the superintendent to reach out to you to approach the school committee to discuss this, because it was brought up that it came from your office. So that's, Mr. Lazo's intent was not to put you in the middle of, of a local issue, but we had asked that we have this conversation directly, have the state to the table because of this issue, so.
I think that's fair enough. I think I'd be happy for you all to have a copy of that email. So to clarify, the state does not tell districts what to, which of the options to choose under federal NCLB restructuring. So what we will say is, if the district decides to merge two schools, then we have some directions about how we would consider their accountability status. We also provide for you the options as a district that you have under NCLB. I might want to mention that we just got a new waiver so that it's gonna change next year. But right now, under NCLB, there are actions you have, can take, you only have to take one of several steps if the school is in corrective action or if the school is in restructuring. So I'd be happy to provide that information. It's on the website. The information that I provided to the superintendent was straight from that guidance. Again, it's about federal, it's about the federal NCLB. And in no way would I have said, and it's just not true, that districts typically take a certain course to alleviate a problem under restructuring, collect corrective actions. We don't even collect that data. But merging two high schools is, I mean, two schools is not something that we would weigh in on for a school that is not in Level 4, which your schools aren't.
So, let me ask you, none of our schools are in Level 4?
Correct.
It's just the district that's a Level 4.
Correct.
Okay. So as far as the accountability standards for the school, and just, just because we're at the table here, so I appreciate a little dialogue on this, is, we certainly have built that school to be two separate schools with some shared spaces, i.e. cafeteria, gymnasium, auditorium, music. Okay? So does the state weigh on, weigh in on whether that is one school now because it's within the same building plan, but totally distinct? When we built the building, we to, it was distinct administrative offices, nursing offices, guidance offices, but with some shared resources because it made sense? So does that now become one building for accountability standards, or does it still maintain two accountability standards because they're distinct programs within the same building?
Typically, those would be two distinct schools, what you described. We have, all over the state, two schools in one building sharing a space. But if they have administrative, different administrative staff, structures and programs, they're two distinct schools. And it's a local decision about what you do with those schools. And that's, that's what I would say to any superintendent, certainly. We did have this conversation, and I can only say what's under federal NCLB law, we don't weigh in on that. It's your decision.
I appreciate it, and that's why, thank you for that, that influence.
I, I would just like to thank you for your time tonight. I think that you've cleared the air on one issue for me. I think we've got a lot of homework ahead, and we'll go on from here. And if it's documentation of what we do, maybe we don't document it well enough, maybe it's one of those things, we'll, we'll work on it. We don't quit.
So, Sheriff, if I may wrap up and, and just say thank you, and also just want to make sure that we're clear about one thing. This is definitely not about documentation. What this is about is about taking the action steps that are aggressive enough to reach teachers, help them, and therefore help students. So we didn't see that action in the plan. We made some comments in the feedback where basically the plan, rate of the plan is too slow. So right now, there's not enough capacity building of administrators to carry out these tasks so that teachers can get the support they need. There's not the timelines that will ensure that the district is on the same kind of rate of improvement that it was before. And with regard to the documents, the department is not dictating what kind of evidence you will provide of progress. This is what the district leadership comes up with and submits to us. So in your plan for South, the Southbridge plan that your district leader submitted to us, they have provided what they consider early evidence of change, benchmarks, short-term outcomes, and final outcomes. So what they said is, they want it to provide to us this evidence. We understand that good management is all about knowing the results you're getting. So if this is what the district says, that this is how they're gonna know if they're gonna get the results, we'll say, "We'll take a look at it." If they need to revisit, what kinds of evidence will concentrate? If they need to revisit what kinds of evidence will constitute their management, then that's something that we can look at. This plan is a living document. But the bottom line is, just like it says in this plan, we expected to see what they said that they would be looking at themselves. So, an example is, we were expecting to see aligned curriculum documents and resources, because that was cited as early evidence, under Strategic Objective 2.1. Also, under that strategic objective, we were looking for learning walks, providing evidence of aligned curriculum and resources in the classrooms. We didn't see those learning walks, because my understanding is, they haven't been started yet. We were looking to see, as it says, under Strategic Objective 1, I'm talking about in the quarter that we monitored. Okay, so we, of, sorry, we didn't see the evidence of the changes. I'm sorry. We did see evidence of some learning walks. Right, we had the schedule. For the, we were also looking, it's just another example, under 1.2, that 100% of students have access to Tier 1 services. 5% to 10% receive Tier 3 pull-out services. If that's happening, then it should be something that we can pull out and that as managers, and we're all managers on some level, we have to know the results we're getting. And so, it's about coming on the same page, but it's not about meaningless documentation. If anything in this plan is meaning that has been listed by the leaders who came up with it as information that is useless, then it should be taken out. And because the plan hasn't been approved, because one of the problems we did have with the plan is that the benchmarks of success were not measurable enough, ambitious enough, and some of it didn't make, show that an impact would be made. So, those things, we don't need to see a lot of agendas in minutes, but we do need to see, is that people are spending time doing the things that are reached in the classroom. And so, we want to come back in April and say, "That's what we're seeing," and we'll continue working in partnership with your superintendent and making sure that we're all moving forward in the right direction together. But thank you for having us, and taking the significant amount of time to look at, I know this is, to look at what's happening right now. I know this is hard for all of us, but we appreciate your time. It shows your dedication to all of you, because this is hard, this is hard stuff here. So, thank you.
Dr. Mitchell, thank you very much for being here tonight, and Dr. Bondo.
Thank you.
There's certainly a lot for the school committee to take away from this report, and I understand that it's a benchmark. I'll just echo some of the frustration that we have, because we, as school committee members, are a longtime school committee that have lived through this turnaround plan and invested a lot of time, resources, money, and sweat to make this a better district. And sometimes it's hard to look at a report like this, because you feel like all that hard work has gone by the wayside. And I understand that we're, I always talk in a district about how we need to evolve. And we've always talked about rigor and increasing rigor in our classrooms. I don't know how much more the school committee can tell our administration that we want to increase the bar, we want to raise those expectations of our students and our staff. No longer can teachers, administrators come to the school committee and say, "We're not giving you the resources." There used to be a time where they would come to us, "Well, I don't have the books in my classroom. I don't have the curriculum. I, you're just not giving it to me." The school committee has worked very hard with limited resources sometimes, to provide everything that administrators have asked us to provide them. And one of the takeaways that I take from this report, that I find troubling, is one of the things that you mentioned, Dr. Bondo, was Galileo testing. We've talked about Galileo testing going back to Dr. Hanley three years ago. And I think later tonight, we may get a report on that, but that's frustrating to the school committee. So, when my colleagues express frustration, it's the fact that we've talked about this for so long, so many years. We're not the paid educators. We're not the $100,000 positions that we've invested in this, in this community to provide these services to our children. All of our children are products of this system. So, we have a vested interest in not only my child's education, but every child that comes through the doors of our schools. It's frustrating for me to see kids not be vested in their education, not taking school seriously. The parents that don't have a vested interest in their child's education. I would like the state to maybe come up with some tools to assist communities on how to get these parents vested in their education. Because certainly, there's the high-end learners, or the middle learners at our school district that are succeeding. We have students graduating this year that have been accepted to some of the finest colleges in the country, nominations to West Point. We must be doing something right. The state should be able to tell us, "We're doing something right." We do have to raise the bar for the rest of our students. But the frustration remains, is the fact of the lack of execution in plans. We have a plan for this, and a plan for this, and we have an improvement plan, and we have an ESL plan, and we have all kinds of plans, but we don't see the results and we don't see the execution. So, I welcome you with this first report, but it goes back farther, because from my takeaway from this is, you've been working, you've been working with the district for a long time, but you have monthly meetings with us. So, it's now incumbent on us as a school committee to now put our feet to the fire and hold our administration accountable for these reports that we get them as a school committee. Because I don't want to now be blindsided four months from now, and the state saying, "Well, you didn't, you know, your plan was this, 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 we didn't see any evidence." Now, perhaps it's up to us as a school committee to now demand those reports that show that you have a functional report to the state, the state has approved that improvement plan, that's acceptable to your standards. And then monthly reports as to what our administrators are doing. So, while I'm frustrated, I thank you for the report, and I'm glad that you will be here on a quarterly basis, because the worst thing that could ever happen is the fact that you come here now, and we don't see you for a year and a half, and you come back and say nothing stuff. I'd rather have you come back every-
You learned our lesson. You all have given us that feedback before, so.
Right, we have.
Learned a lesson from you.
Right, we have. You know, so give us that feedback. Sometimes it's tough, but we'll take it and we'll make the changes necessary, and we'll hold the people accountable that needs to be accountable. So, thank you for being here. Happy Valentine's Day to you. Enjoy your rest of your evening. We have a long agenda left, so, thank you very much, Dr. Mitchell. All right, with that, I'm going to take a quick two-minute recess, and we'll be back in a minute. All right, the school committee will be back in session, reconvene at 9:07 PM. Our next presentation this evening is achievement data for the grades 6 through 12. Mr. Zangy, Mr. Bishop, and Ms. Allen, present. Mr. Zangy, good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you. I did talk to the other directors and the principals and agreed that-
Is that on?
Put it close.
It's on. They need to turn it up.
Talk loud.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm reporting the data for the grades 6 through 12. We start with the enrollment. This is, this is all October, one enrollment. It was all based on the SIMS reporting, so it's all reported from the schools. I did highlight the yellow, just so you could see what the cohorts look like. So, then, in that grade, in the year 2011, 2012, that grade 1291 started out with approximately 133 in the ninth grade. The, unlike the DESE, you can interrupt me anytime. The other one, the next one is a report that Mr. Ely asked one of the team chairs to conduct for him. It was done at the high school. And the original question here was, how many students that leave the high school are students who are with us from K through 12? Okay, so that was the original question. And if I understand it correctly, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Bishop, tell me, I think the methodology was, the team chair going to Mr. Bishop, asking him for the names of students who, who didn't graduate, and then taking, basically taking those folders and just either researching what was in those students' files, and talking to the guidance counselors, and probably talking to Mr. Bishop also. And right there, that's the results of what they had.
So, Mr. Zangy, just to clarify, the right-hand column, which is the number of students who did not graduate with their class-
Correct.
-but were in our schools from grades, say, K through 12?
Correct.
And the one in front of that, the column to the left, where it says total, SHS reported, the 32, for example, 2010, that's the number of students who didn't graduate?
Correct. That's the, that's the number of students that they reported did not graduate. And out of that group, 12 were in the Southbridge Public Schools from, from K through 12. It comes out to be about a third.
And then the previous columns are where those students ended up?
We have the GED column for the students who leave to get a GED, students who moved, just moved out of the district, those who decided to go to Job Corps, those who were still at Southbridge High School and just didn't graduate, those who went to work, those who went to Project Grove, and those who, there's no record of where they went. That would be the unknown. We reported here the four-year graduation rate and a four-year adjusted graduation rate, from 2006, 2007 to 2010, 2011. The, the four-year adjusted rate is the rate that only included students who were in the original ninth-grade cohort and didn't leave. So, those were just the students who started, okay? So, those were, and the reason why this is like this, because districts had complained that they wanted to know how, how they were doing with their students, not the students who may have come in the 10th grade, or may have came, come in the 11th grade and didn't drop back out. So, essentially, that four-year adjusted rate is just the students who we have. And you can see, for the most part, we do better with our kids if they're with us from the ninth grade on. Last column, you see the state rate. Dropout rates, we just got the new dropout rates in, in Friday, and I guess they're self-explanatory. There were a couple of things that happened in the, in the 2005 and 2006 school year, you see a little blip there, and the state just made adjustments in how they categorized the dropouts. Before that, what would happen is, if a student dropped out, or said they were going to drop out, and then they decided to get a GED, that wasn't, that wasn't recorded. So, that would just go in as a dropout, when really they went to get a GED, and it should have been counted against us. So, the dropouts went down that year. And then in the next year, they changed the categories for dropout rates and transfer codes. So, you see another jump, both at Southbridge High School and at the state level. So, you know, I, I don't know how accurate those two, those two years would be, either for the state or for, for the high school. We then broke it down by ethnicity, and we can see this year was the 6.5% of the white students who were white dropped out, and 5.2% of Hispanics. And I think actually, this is the first year, and Mr. Bishop, correct me if I'm wrong, that the Hispanic population is greater than the white population at the high school. I think it's about 52 or 53%. PSAT scores for the last few years, we recorded the number of students who have taken the test and their grades. The scale, the three categories in the scale is between 20 and 80 in each category. I show there the Southbridge High School and the Massachusetts averages. The Massachusetts averages are actually higher than the averages in the rest of the country. And as a matter of fact, in order to be commended or to reach national merit status, the cut point for Massachusetts is probably one of the highest in the country. And states often complain about that, because if you're in, if you're in Mississippi, for example, the cut score is much, much lower than in Massachusetts, and I think New Jersey's is pretty high, too. So, if you're in this state, you really have to have a high score to be either commended or be a national merit scholar.
Jack?
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Principal.
Thank you. Mr. Zangy, in the PSAT data, sophomore year, I'm looking at, in the year 2010, 2011, there were seven students who took the PSATs at Southbridge High.
As sophomores?
As sophomores. Now, is, what, what vehicle is there for, for parents and students to be aware of the taking of the PSATs? What's involved? Is it at Southbridge High? Is there a fee? Does a letter go home to parents that, on such and such a date, PSATs are taking place?
Well, the PSATs are given pretty much at the same time every year, in October, and I believe it's always a Wednesday, too, if, correct me if I'm wrong. The process that the high school uses, I'm not, I don't know what they use to notify. Mr. Bishop?
The PSATs are given on a Wednesday to students. This year, we selected seven students in the sophomore class. Next year, we've budgeted, no student pays for the PSATs in our buildings. Next year, we've budgeted for all sophomores and all juniors. Jeff and I have been working very closely with the college board who administers the testing. We've worked with Heather Reyes. We've, we're using the sophomore test next year as a diagnostic to just, once again, similar to what we're getting out of the Galileo results, and the junior year, all students, it's a preparation for SATs, which juniors take in May of their sophomore year. Quite honestly, we have not put enough emphasis on PSATs or SATs at our school. Since Mr. Ely's come here, it's been one of his driving forces, that we were very MCAS-driven at the high school, as in most buildings. And as Mr. Ely says, getting to the MCAS threshold is rather like getting to the first floor. We need to get to the roof, and that's where we are with the SATs and the PSATs. We're working to get all of our students more familiar. It's a totally different test than MCAS. We spent 10 years teaching kids how to take MCAS, and we're finding that the SAT is a totally different test. That's why we have the after-school, the evenings now, Monday, Wednesday nights for 10 weeks, to get kids better ready for the SATs.
If I could follow up with that. Did you say, in that year, you selected seven students to take?
Seven kids were identified through guidance as to take that test.
Okay, things, it's just-
That's just the sophomores. It's predominantly a junior test.
I know. I mean, I, my three children went through the Southbridge School District, and all three graduated from college, and I made them take it, the PSATs.
Right. And I think probably at that, I think you probably had to pay for it back at that time, $2, $15.
10, 15, I don't remember, but I-
But we find it to be so important, the district is funding it next year, hopefully the district's funding it, Mr. Wigan. We will test every junior and every sophomore next year.
Dr. Mitchell, do you have a question?
Mr. Bishop, these seven students, is this year, or is this data incorrect? Is that year 1011 or 1112?
Those would have been the students who took it in October 2010.
Sophomores.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's last.
We didn't have, the schools did not, if your son or daughter, if your son or da- I feel like I'm going to eat this pretty soon. If your son or daughter took it, took this test, this- If your son or daughter took it, took this test this October that just passed, you probably have the results, but the school doesn't have the reports. And so that's why we didn't report them out. And it is a very, very important test to take. And that's a good decision on the high school's part, to give it to everybody. Because many of the scholarships that are given out by corporations, for example, are decided by PSATs. It's also a great practice for the SATs. I think last year, the difference between the scores of students, the students who took the SATs, there was about a 150-point difference between those who didn't take the PSATs first and those who did. So it is an important test to take.
Dr. Mink?
Mr. Bishop, is that correct? I think the school actually sent the PSAT scores home. So you can't say that you don't have...
Tanya, can you talk into the mic, because we can't hear you?
So if PSATs are received by the school, and school sends them home, then clearly, you have to have the data. It's not the school doesn't have the data. They come from school.
I don't have the data, so they didn't give it to me.
Well, that is just unfortunate, isn't it?
It is. Especially on Valentine's Day. I thought they'd show me a little more love.
Valentine's Day.
Okay, go ahead.
The next, I just, what I did is I just, in graph form, just broke down that PSAT data for the sophomores. Now, it's interesting, an interesting note there. If you look at 2009, 2010, the high school students in math, and they exceeded the state, which means they actually exceeded the averages in the country. And in writing, they were right about the average. Those same students as sophomores, as juniors, scored a lot lower. And the difference was the amount of students who took the test. And the sophomores, there were 17 took the test. And in the junior year, there were, I believe, 28 or 29 who took the test. And that was, that seemed to be what the difference was. If you look at the average grades of those students, the additional students who took it in the junior year had a low grade point averages.
So, just so I know, that would be last year's junior class, which would be this year's senior class?
Correct. The same thing was done for the juniors. Same type of scoring. We broke it down into reading, math, and writing. And we did the graph to make it just easy to do a comparison. SAT data, again, the PSATs is a great practice for the SAT data. The scoring's a little different. The, each section, the grading goes from 200 to 800 for a combined total of 2,400. I think the average in Massachusetts was 1549 this year, if I'm not mistaken. And again, we just broke it down into the graphs. As Mr. Bishop said, we are doing a lot of work now with the College Board, especially on the PSATs. They'll be coming in a couple of times to help us work. There are reports there that never really existed before to help students kind of look at the questions that got incorrect and to do some work with them.
Mrs. Prinsbick?
Thank you. When are the SATs taken?
They're taken throughout the senior year typically. So this data represents SAT scores that were taken throughout that year, throughout the given year.
Okay, so in 2010, 2011, 47 students took the SAT?
Correct.
Only 47?
Correct.
Why?
Okay. So almost double that could have taken SAT test.
They all could have taken.
Wow.
But I just, Ms. Prins, no, I think, Mr. Prinsbick, the thing is, the fact is that, and Mr. Bishop can correct me if I'm wrong, SATs are, the student has to pay to take the SAT.
I understand.
So I know, talking to a lot of the kids there, the pairs in my son's class, that, you know, you have to make sure that they take the SATs. And I know Mr. Bishop, and Mr. Bishop and I have had extensive conversations about SAT over the last year. So if you want to comment on that, Mr. Bishop, because I know you're trying to really look at this SAT issue and working with students.
Let's clear up a couple of things. First of all, majority of our students, I think 70-some percent are free and reduced lunch. That entitles them, the SAT gives us a tremendous number of free SAT examinations. Students don't show up. We register them. They're all set to go, and they do not make it to Tantascro, which is the nearest testing site. Additionally, as you know about, I think of the 60 students who left Southbridge High last year for post-secondary education, 30 of those students went to consignment, which does not require SATs. So there's another incentive. This past Saturday, U Ink kids, the Upwood Bowl program, we had 11 of them signed up, or two Saturdays ago. We had 11 students signed up with a van to leave here on Saturday morning to go to Holy Cross College to take a practice SAT. Of the 11, five showed up. I mean, there is so much we can do at the school level, and no program is more connected to the parents than the U Ink program. So if they are having difficulty getting the kids out the door in the morning, you can only imagine the difficulty on a Saturday for students who want to go, who maybe think they want to go to Tantascro to take the test. Now, the difference to the MCAS and the SATs is the MCAS is required for graduation. The kids get that. They're not getting a diploma unless they do that. And it seems that there's a giant disconnect after that about really pursuing success on SATs. And it's frustrating.
Did you say the free and reduced, that they are able to take the SAT without the charge?
Yes, for the most part. We are given so many waivers. And every time a student doesn't show up, they take another waiver away from us the next year.
And, Mr. Bishop, I just, and you can verify this for me as well. A lot of colleges are going away from SATs as well. So they're making a test optional. And Providence College, Holy Cross, assumption. A lot of those schools are making it test optional. So some may not opt to take it. Should they take the SAT?
I think we've been hearing that a lot, Mr. Jovan. But in reality, when you take a school like Yale that has 28,000 applicants, and they're only going to take about 8% of those, the quickest way to reduce the numbers is a fast numerical look at SAT scores.
Right.
The big schools, they're going to continue to use them. You know, if you get into a Holy Cross, yeah, they have less applicants, I would imagine. And probably, there could be a little more genus in the application process.
All right, not to get off the topic. I did have a conversation with Providence College Admissions Counselor Friday evening on a visit there. And a lot of it was on whether kids should take SATs or not in grades. They do use some criteria. So whether it's test optional or not, sometimes they do make those decisions based on test scores.
I can tell you, Mr. Jovan, Heather Ayers, who I mentioned before from the College Board, she was a college admissions officer at Brown, I believe it was, Mr. Zangy. And was it Emerson? I thought she was at Brown, too, for a while. And she was very insistent that the SATs will be around for a while. And I have to believe her.
And one of the reasons for that, and Miss Ayers focused on this, is that schools, a lot of schools, they can't tell the difference between an A at Southbridge High School and an A at Tantascro. So sometimes, one of the only things they can distinguish from is those SAT scores. So they still are an important test.
You're absolutely right about that conversation, because we had a conversation about that as well.
Yeah.
And this admissions counselor actually talked about a high school in Boston, whereas over 50% of the student body had an A average. So what does that A mean? So yes, you're...
You know, it's interesting. One of the things she did say to us is that if they have a student who's done poorly for three years, and then all of a sudden, they're senior, they get all As, they took, they take a second look at that kid. They do, they do look at that kind of kid because it shows that they can do something, especially coming from such a low performance. But the SATs still remain an important test.
Mr. Jovan?
Dr. Mink?
Mr. Zangy, what are national averages? You say Massachusetts averages are a lot higher than a national average. What is a national average?
I think, I'm not sure what the national average is. But I know when I was looking at the PSAT data, it was about 100 points lower than Massachusetts.
100 lower?
Around, in any given year, sure.
And do you assume that it would be similar for SATs?
I would think so, sure.
Do you know that? So what we are seeing here, in terms of performance of our student on a national level, may be above national average. Is that a fair assumption?
I don't, I don't know if 100's, it would be closer to the average, certainly, sure.
So my second question. What is the range of scores that our students receive? Because we have very small numbers. And without seeing any statistical value of the data being compared, it's really hard to even say that our students are performing worse than students in Massachusetts.
I don't understand the question.
Since we test very few students, has data been statistically analyzed for validity that actually shows that our students are significantly lower performing compared to the state average?
No, I haven't seen anything like that. I don't have those kind of numbers.
Do you know what the range of our performers is?
I, I, we have...
You have that?
Now, the reason I ask the question is we often see these comparisons, right? And if we're testing 10 students, and our average is a certain number compared to millions that are testing nationwide, you can't compare those two. You have to perform an analysis that's going to say, based on the number of students being tested, whether that's actually a difference or there is no difference. So judging numbers without being analyzed properly is, you know, can give a very wrong impression sometimes. That's, that's the reason I'm raising the question.
Right, you asked about the numbers and the ranges. These are numbers off the top of my head. We tested this past, this past season, last October, we tested every sophomore for a diagnostic purpose. And we tested 35 juniors. Looking at those scores, and I spoke with every one of those 35 students, I called every one of those 35 students in. I don't want to use names. I'm just going to tell you that I have one student who got a 280 on his MCAS ELA. That is the highest score you can get. And got just over a 400 on his PSAT in English. So there's a giant disconnect in his scores very well academically. So my looking at it is, I have to believe we, as a high school, have not prepared our students well enough to take that exam because it is so different from an MCAS exam. It's timed. There are 10 sections. We need to give the kids the strategies. If you look at the, if you look at the SAT prep book, you'll see that, take the second section, it's mathematics. There are 25 minutes for 20 questions. And it will tell you, unless you're trying to get a 700 or better, you do not want to do all of the questions. If you were trying, for instance, most of my students score around 450 on the, 45, 450 on the PSATs. I'm trying to get those scores over 5, which is what state universities are looking for, 1,000 combined or 1,500 with all three. That's where we're trying to go. And there were strategies. Because like in that math section, there are six easy, six medium, six difficult, to break it up. And we don't want the kids to waste time on the, and in MCAS, we tell them from the get-go, fill in every answer, do every question, answer everything. And it's a totally different test. And I don't think, you know, we haven't had the ability right now to get the students into MCAS preps during the day. So that's why we're trying to get them in the evening. I had 34 kids sign up for that class. Here's another example. Monday night, last night was our first night, 13 showed up. Is there a level of frustration? I spoke personally to every one of those 34 students at length. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is to get them there. But I'm going to keep trying. I'm going to keep hounding them.
I think Dr. Mink will have a question.
The reason, I think you brought up a very, very important point, which is that you, we can have students that are doing, scoring perfect on state testing, and yet nationally, they score 400, 450, which is not where you want them to be. But that, in my mind, does not, speaks only about the strategy of testing. It doesn't speak about the content of the knowledge necessarily. And so, again, looking at these numbers, we need to put this in perspective. It's really dependent how we compare. This might not indicate any difference in terms of knowledge that our students have. And that, that's important to point out.
Mr. Ely?
No, I think there's some validity to what you're saying, but I will say this. The overall issue about doing well on any assessment is rigor. Consistent rigor within every classroom. High expectations from the time they're in kindergarten up through the time that they graduate from our high school and go on to college. And Mr. Bishop, and I was working with his staff, we're working with, across the district. It's one of the things that maybe we don't document well enough, that we, the things that we are doing, the strategies that we're using. But we are doing it. And I think something you brought up, Mr. Jovan, the rigor is critical. It's, the test-taking strategies will get you to a certain level. But even a test-taking strategy, if you don't know the material or don't understand what they're asking, you cannot do it. So I think overall, I would, I want to stay away from test-taking strategy sessions and more toward spending our time increasing the rigor within every classroom. And the expectations that we hold everybody to. So while the test-taking strategies, I think, are important, and I disagree with Dr. Domenico only from the standpoint of, I think it is an indication of overall quality of teaching and learning. And I don't think it's anybody's fault as much as it is we focus so much because, quite frankly, we have people like Dr. Mitchell and Mrs. Dr. Bonda who come in and tell us that we're not even reaching the floor. So we spend so much time trying to reach the floor that we forget there's a second floor, and a third floor, and a ceiling, and a sky. And ultimately, we have, we have to try to get students to understand that the MCAS is a floor. It is simply a floor. And overall rigor will get us past the floor very easily, very quickly. So you have a student who scores a 280 on the MCAS and does well academically in our school, but doesn't do well on a national test. It's not the student. It's really the rigor, the standards we're holding our student to and the way we're pushing that student. And I think that's the conversation that we've been having within the district for the last year and a half. And I will, and I'll go back. We don't document those conversations well enough. And I've, and I have told the administrators to document everything they're doing now because I knew, you know, knew the documentation was going to become important. Just wasn't quite sure it was going to become important that quickly. So I'll take, I'll take full responsibility for that. But go on, Mr. Zangy, I'm sorry.
Any more questions on this SAT?
The AP data, this was taken over the last five years. Again, this was reported from data that the high school provided.
Jeff, you can talk into the microphone. It's just not working.
It's not working, picking you up that much.
Top row just gives the number of exams taken in any given year. And the bottom is the number of exams with grades of 3, 4, or 5. And we use that because that's typically the range in which colleges will consider giving you college credit.
Jeff, do you have any analysis on what those percentages mean overall to other high schools or kids that take AP tests as to those type of scores?
You mean, how many kids from other schools?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, okay, we had 16 exams taken. We had five that got those grades. What's the overall percentage of, of other schools that have certain, if I'm explaining this right? Reach, reach that percentage, I mean?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I don't have those numbers.
You don't have them?
Do you have?
If you look at the 06, 07, we had just about eliminated AP courses at the high school during that period. I believe we were just doing English at that time.
Right.
Okay. We've systematically tried to restore the, the AP offerings. If you look at the, this year's testing, the 11, 12, which we'll be doing, you'll see, instead of 37, it's dropped, it's gonna drop way down again, because we stopped doing biology testing this year for a year, because they're gonna do it their junior year to give them the chemistry background they, I believe they need, and the, and the college board believes they need. I think we were testing those youngsters prematurely, and we've had that conversation with parents.
Right.
Uh, we're also next year going to be implementing AP World History and AP US History. So those will be additional opportunities. I don't know as far as, most of these numbers seem to come in around a third. I, I don't know that that's far off. Mr. Eath, you have worked at many high schools over the years, I, I don't.
We didn't use the AP test in New York, we used the International Baccalaureate Program.
Okay, so you had a different, different measurement, but?
It's just a question, I was just wondering. But I, I do appreciate, I know, and I thank you, Mr. Bishop, for the dialogue that you had with the parents at the high school regarding the AP Biology testing with your staff. And I'll be, I'll be anxious to see what difference that makes. I think it's gonna make a difference. So I appreciate the feedback and your assistance in that.
Next is the Galileo report for 2008, 2009 to 2011, 2012. We've actually taken it out of the, both the high school and the middle school. It hasn't had the success we thought it would have, they don't, don't implement it with the fidelity that we, we hoped they would. And, and if they're not gonna use it, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna work, so. I know the high school does use some Study Island stuff, so. We have taken it out.
Yeah, could you just repeat it, 'cause I can't.
Could you repeat that, what you just said?
We, what, the whole thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Microphone's really?
Yeah, I heard you something about taking it out.
I'm pretty close to this thing.
Do you wanna sit up here?
Nope. I want Dr. Domenico to hit me. Um, I said that, uh, th- this report shows the, uh, results from 2008, 2009 to 2011, 2012. And it report, it displays the percentage of students that passed at a proficient or advanced on the benchmark test. And it hasn't been, you know, what we thought it would be, and so we've decided this year to, to take it out. Uh, we, we, we first phased out the ELA, and we won't give a second math.
We phased out the ELA, but we replaced it with the Pearson test. We do give it at the request of the secondary teachers, right?
Correct.
All right, Dr. Oler?
Mr. Zangy, um, I'm, I'm a little confused.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. I'm a little confused, um, sort of seems to be my place tonight. We've been doing the Galileo stuff for like three years.
Correct.
And, and after three years of all this, I get a report from you that says we're hanging it up. So three years of-
At the middle and high school.
Three years of, of gathering, three years of crunching, three years of putting together, three years of assessing and changing, and was for nothing.
I don't know if it was for no- nothing, you'll have to ask the, the high school and the, and the middle school. And to me, it's certainly a wasted opportunity. And I would hope that they would've implemented it in a different way, but it never happened. And, um, you know, in, in, in the high school, they've chosen to go a different direction, they use more of the Study Island, and...
So is that a, you feel that's a, a choice of the administrators at the high school and the middle school to choose to go in a different direction than what Galileo had to offer?
They chose to use Study Island more than, more than Galileo. They don't believe in Galileo, I mean, that's the bottom line. I mean, you can, you can ask them, and, and they don't. And, and you know what, we don't run the, curriculum department doesn't run the buildings, and they make that decision if they're gonna use it the way it ought to be used, and, and they've decided not to. We respect that decision, but we continue to give the benchmarks, uh, we continue to give the benchmark exam in ELA until we found something else that they wanted to use, they looked at the Pearson along with Ms. Ryan, and decided that would be a better, a better solution for them. I don't think it's ever a waste of time when you give an assessment. An assessment's a way for a, a teacher to, to gauge performance. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's ever a waste of time to give that. But again, you would have to ask them if they thought it was a waste.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm perplexed that we would, that we would take three years to figure this out, and then to, to say, well, we're not gonna use it. Did, did anyone, I, I guess I might have to ask the high school and the middle school if you're telling me that. Did anyone know two years ago that we weren't gonna use it? Did anyone know three years ago that we weren't gonna use it? Or was this a, a decision that was made just before this one page, after three years of waiting for Galileo? That, that we have one page right here that says, well, we've done this, and it's not really what people want, so we're not gonna do it. That's time, money, resources, energy, three years worth for, for someone to say, well, ah, yeah, ah, hmm, let's just do something different. I personally, I don't wanna invest my time, this district's money and energy and resources into things that after three years, we're just gonna say, ah, let's, let's go in a different direction. You know, we did that with everyday math, we, we, you know, is this gonna stop? And I guess I'm just voicing my frustration, Jeff, it's not directly at you, I suppose, I guess some of it is, but, come on.
The curriculum department didn't decide to go in a different direction. I believe in Galileo. You can't, you can't find research on online assessments these days that doesn't mention Galileo, it's one of the best in the country. I, I believe, I believe in it, I believe in it. And I can tell you why I believe in it. They don't believe in it, they make that decision. You, you would have to ask them if they think it's a waste of time. I don't, I, I don't think it's a waste of time to, to invest three years trying, trying out a system. I don't, but maybe they do. Can we ask them?
Let me-
Hold on, Mr. Eath is gonna respond.
Well, let me respond to, to something that might clarify one thing. When I came here last year, there was a lot of angst over Galileo. There was a lot of turmoil within the district, within the teaching staff, within each building, about how it would be used and what it was being used for. So I met with the English teachers at the high school, all of them, with Mr. Bishop and Ms. Ryan. And at that time, they expressed the frustration that they didn't feel like they were getting results from the ELA part of Galileo that they could use to help them, help students learn at a higher level. So I said, well, I'm not willing to replace it, I think benchmark testing is important, formative assessment is important. So if you can come up with something that's better, and that may, you know, that's, that's, gives you the information you want, then we'll make that transition. So they made the transition as a collective group, with, I think, with Mr. Bishop on board for that, and he can explain how that worked, to using the Pearson resource that we already had in district, because we use a Pearson series at the high school in, in ELA. And to me, a, a, a formative assessment or, or a benchmark assessment is only as good as it's being used. So, so I felt like if the teachers were saying they didn't wanna use what the district had given them, they felt there was a better one out there that was more informative, then I'm all for making that transition, because then they're gonna use it, they're gonna be vested in it, and they're going to, it's gonna be more effective for kids. So what they did in math, I'll, I'll turn over to, to, to Mr. Bishop and Ms. Allen, 'cause I'm not sure exactly what they did. I think they still gave the Galileo pro- uh, test in math.
Make sure you get close.
I'm a lot shorter, okay. I can speak about Galileo from the teacher's perspective, as well as when I was the ELA coordinator and now as an administrator. And i- in the beginning, you know, I worked with Jeff and I trained a lot of the teachers on how to use the Galileo system. And I thought it was a great benchmark, we could do a lot with it. It was not extremely user-friendly, and I think that was a big issue with some of the teachers, because they feel like they have so many responsibilities already, this is just an added responsibility. I think that was one problem. Another problem was, this is all done on the computer, this is a computerized test. And there's a lack of technology, I know in the middle school for sure, with almost 600 kids and only, you know, two real computer labs that we can use. Scheduling out these Galileo tests for ELA and math is a real project in my building. And then if students are absent, then you gotta try to get those students in the mix and so forth. So I think that was a problem. Another problem is our students are, are tested, tested, tested. And, you know, we push this, or we had been pushing MCAS for such a long time, I think they feel tested out. And doing this three times in a year with this whole scheduling debacle was, for the kids, you know, they weren't vested, because it doesn't count for them, it doesn't count for them to graduate, to, to pass a Galileo test. I think it is a useful tool, but in order for the results to be useful to us, for the data to be useful for us, the kids have to be really vested in the test and really put forth 100% effort. And they weren't. It's a, it was a computerized test, and they would click, click, click to get through it, is, is what I observed, um, as a, as a teacher, as a director, and, and as an administrator. I think Galileo is a wonderful tool, but our kids are not, uh, because we need benchmarks. I mean, not necessarily Galileo, but we need benchmarks. We're looking at ANET right now, which I think would be a great tool. I think having a benchmark tool is a great thing. But this particular test was not user-friendly for the teachers, and the students were not vested. So we did do Galileo action plans at every grade for three years, but the, the results were never consistent. In other words, you know, the things that they were weak in this year, the next year they weren't. And I think that was skewed because the kids were not giving it their all. Some kids were, but not all kids were. So the results weren't, weren't, the data wasn't useful.
So can I ask you just a question then? So what is the difference with the Pearson test? Wha- what, what makes that different for, uh, for a testing?
The, the Pearson tests are from the PH Literature Series that the kids are actually using in class. So the benchmark tests that they have are things that they have actually already learned in class. In other words, the Galileo test sometimes tested kids on something, a strand or standard that they hadn't even learned yet, because they weren't in the order that the teacher's curriculum was going in. But the PH Literature Series, those are based on what the teachers are actually doing in class. So the students have more of an opportunity, they're more familiar with the material.
But how do you get their buy-in? If you didn't get the buy-in on Galileo, how are you getting the buy-in on the Pearson?
Well, a lot of teachers are using it as a, a test grade as well, so they're getting credit in class for doing that test.
I think what he's saying is how, this is how we get buy-in from the staff.
Oh, from the staff?
Well, no, no, my, my question was a student, no, my question was a student. So, I mean, if they, if they were tested so much on MCAS, and now you're giving a Pearson test, so is that just a normal test that they're taking as part of their regular class? And you're using that as an assessment?
Right, the teachers are using that also as an assessment for their own grade books. So it's an assessment, and it's used as a diagnostic to see if the kids are meeting those benchmarks, but they can also use it because it's material that the kids have actually covered in class, if that makes sense.
No, I, I understand that. And I know, and I understand, 'cause I was familiar with Study Island, where kids in that, in the high school liked Study Island because of the type of
Right.
feedback it gave students automatically, and that they were able to build on certain skills and go further, so I, I understood that, so. Dr. Domenico, did you have?
Yeah, I, I, I have a couple. Again, there, there's gotta be a point, I, I think where democracy, when democracy in school stops. Mr. Zangy, you're Director of Instruction and Assessment. You should be well and curriculum, yes. So you should be very well qualified to pick a test that should evaluate our students properly. And not buying into it, this is not a religion to buy into it, this is a test that you have to administer, and you gotta do it, just like everything else. We don't like taking MCAS, we don't do a lot of things, but we have to do it. So leaving, leaving now, and I, this, this has nothing to do with teachers' choices, mind you. But that's why we have support in the district to guide how we're gonna go about getting better. And if we don't use the information that our specialists are giving us, then my, my, so this is more philosophical than anything. The second one is, when have you started administering Pearson tests?
This year.
So are you telling me that for past three years, we have no assessment data for the district?
We have the Galileo test for the last three years.
But clearly, that's just, let me quote, "It is not what we thought it would be." What does that mean?
Let me explain it. It's not what we thought it would be, because, let, let me just go back and talk about Galileo a little bit. Galileo was centered around benchmark exams. A benchmark exam is very simply, an exam that's given at different points of the year, so teachers get immediate feedback as to the progress of the students, okay? Based on the results of those benchmarks, Galileo sets up a series of increasingly more difficult interventions. So we scout for those students so they're able to solve increasingly more difficult problems. The same complaints we hear about Galileo is the complaints we hear about SATs and PSATs. The test is too long, and the questions are too difficult. Well, I disagree with Dr. Domenico in that, you know, you, you, you take an SAT prep course and that's gonna do it. And that's not quoting exactly. Teaching kids tricks to take a test will give you a bump, but it'll never give you the sustained learning. What Galileo does is provide a way for students to build skills, build capacity to solve every, uh, problems that become more and more difficult, to read passages that get ever longer. Okay? To build that endurance. Our kids are never gonna be successful on these PSATs and SATs by teaching tricks. They'll get there by teaching the skills and building the capacity to solve very difficult problems that they've never seen before. A dependence on drills that use MCAS problems in the hopes that you're gonna see an MCAS problem when you take the MCAS, that doesn't work. It's been proven in research not to work. You have to build the skills and capacity in those students to solve difficult problems. I'm not gonna argue, you know, I'm not gonna stand here and say, I don't believe in teaching to the test. If you don't teach to the test, what are we teaching to? What I don't believe in is teaching the test, and that's what's happened with the MCAS. By doing those drills, those repeated drills, where you just take MCAS problems and think, if you work them out, that somehow you're gonna see them on the MCAS test.
You mean on the SAT?
No, no, on an MCAS test. Is, is, is a, is a failed effort. Not to mention the fact that structuring an entire educational system around graduating students on the MCAS, a 220, is a pretty low bar. If you're not teaching them those difficult, how to solve very difficult problems, ones they have not seen, they will never, ever be able to do them on an SAT or a PSAT. I don't care how much you drill them with those kind of, with, with, with repetitive MCAS problems, it's just not gonna work. It's like wanting to go out and run a six-minute mile, but you get on a treadmill every day, and you, and the fastest it goes is a six-and-a-half-minute mile. You're not gonna run a six-minute mile. And so that's what we're talking about, and that's why Galileo has been a missed opportunity for us. Not to mention the fact that it's a norm-based test. Every time a kid takes a Ben- a Galileo benchmark, it's an opportunity for that, for that kid to see how we compare us to kids on the other side of the country who are taking a very similar test, if they're tested those standards. We blew that opportunity. So in that sense, it's been wasted, but it's been a wasted opportunity. Not, and also, I, I'm on, I'm on the advisory committee for the, um, Department of Ed, developing an online formative assessment as part of the new teaching and learning system, it's just a suite of tools. Online, online test isn't gonna go away. I admit, the Galileo had some, it was not very user-friendly at the, at the beginning, it's been a little better. But it suffers from the same, same, that same illness that all online testing. The MAP test, the, 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 um, the assessments, all of them work the same way. You either get used to taking that test online with difficult problems, or you say, well, we don't do this, we don't do this, our kids think this is too hard. As long as they, as long as you're not training them with those hard problems, you're, you're not gonna have those scores on the SATs and PSATs that you want.
Dr. Oler?
So, excuse me, so Mr. Zangy, here I sit, three years later. Galileo was a wonderful tool, it was gonna work wonders for us, it was everything you said, and I, and I don't doubt you. And it probably is a good test somewhere along the line. But here we are sitting now, three years after the start of this. It's not gonna work for us, that, that's one thing we've ascertained. We have a, a curriculum coordinator that loves it, we have an administrative, administration that apparently doesn't like it, and we have a whole, a whole district full of kids who are no further ahead than they were three years ago. We spent time, resources, and money to get to this spot. You know, as a, as a curriculum coordinator, as a, as an, as a person administrating this, how can you justify that? How can you say to me, Tom, it's okay, we're gonna do something different? I know it was three years of this, I know that, that we have this abysmal report. Uh, and, and this is just piling onto it, and-
I, I justify it, 'cause the alternative is to say, these kind of questions are too hard for our kids, let's just do something else. That's how I justify it.
That's how you justify, that's how you justify it?
That's how I would justify it. What, what's the other option? What, what is the other option?
I, I don't know. We came, three years ago, the option was Galileo, when it was gonna be a big thing, and it was gonna be wonderful. You didn't tell me anything about the pitfalls of this versus anything else three years ago, maybe you didn't know it.
I didn't know the pitfalls.
Okay, I, I just said that, maybe you didn't know it. But nonetheless, the, the same result, we sit with the same results. We have nothing, we had nothing, no further ahead than we were three years ago for the kids in this district. But we spent time, money, energy, salaries, lots, except these kids.
I, I understand that piece, and just let me clarify.
Sure.
I don't love or hate this, I was given it, I was given this to implement. It's a high-quality system, I believe that the way it's structured would've helped our kids perform well on really difficult problems.
Yeah.
And it had, and so I justify it- And it had, and so I justify it because I think it was good for kids. I, I believe it was a good, I think it was, would've helped.
So we, we sit up here, again, we sit up here, the only, the only ones that haven't benefited are the kids, I can't say the only ones, but the kids have not benefited. We have a disparity between what you think and what the other administration thinks. You have a school committee up here that was in full support of it three years ago. To come here now and, and to be, and in this spot, it is just in, incomprehensible to me. That, that, here we are tonight, from the very get-go, this whole, this whole school committee meeting. And, and, and we're, we're still here. Wow. And I'm not, just that you, Jeff, but I hope anyone, everyone, anyone in this room can look and, and see what a spot that we're really in. So I don't really want, I, I'm all set with hearing about, we wanted this and they wanted that. And, and this was gonna be good, but it didn't work because of this, that, the other thing. We have a whole district full of kids that has three more years of, of us, as was mentioned earlier, spinning our wheels. Thanks.
I just wanna say, I, I don't wanna, you know, we're, we're looking at using different assessments, sure. Because things change. But, but I don't want anybody to think that, that we've wasted three years not using the Galileo data. We, we have at the, at the elementary level. It's been implemented with fidelity at Charlton Street. The data teams have been working with this data for three or four years. It's worked extremely well where it was implemented with fidelity.
So how's it helping our school district, Eric?
It's helping our school district because it's, it's setting the tone that benchmark testing is important. And the steps you take from that data, the discussion that occurs because of that data, and the changes that occur at the classroom level because of that data, is important. Now, are we gonna stay with Galileo? No. We're not gonna stay with Galileo simply because when I came in, I immediately noticed that there was a problem with the way Galileo had been implemented. It had been put upon the district. Even talking to some of you, you felt it was put by, upon us by the state. Talking to Dr. Hanley, I spoke to Dr. Hanley about it. The state said they wanted us to use it, we used it. Mr. Zangy was charged with the responsibility to get it started, he got it started. And it has worked in places, as exactly as it was supposed to work, where it was implemented with fidelity. But where it was not implemented with fidelity, it has not worked. Therefore, we need to find something that will be implemented. And that means we need to involve our staff in the decision-making process about, and you're right, it's not a democracy, but as much as I would like to say we can just tell them what to do and they'll do it, sometimes you have to involve them in the conversation, which is what we're trying to do. What I'm saying, Dr., uh, I'm sorry. What I'm saying, Tom, is, is, is that you're right. The benchmark testing itself is important, it's not going away. We're using a different test. The Galileo test cost us about, I think, seventeen thousand dollars a year as a total. That's not including the time it takes to do it. But, but it's, it's the cost for the contracts, about seventeen thousand dollars. We can use that money more effectively, we can get an assessment as part of another tool. We're working with our staff embedded in a way where the data will actually be used effectively to help kids. More effectively than what this has been. And I, I don't blame anybody for this. I, I, I think, I think there's a better way to do it. But the benchmark assessment, the interventions that it triggers, and the ongoing monitoring of student achievement are all things that, that Galileo has now set the tone for in our district. And we will continue to do those things. We may not use this, this tool, we'll use a different tool. But we will use a benchmark assessment. But you may not hear Galileo because quite frankly, it's not been implemented with fidelity. And I see no reason to continue something just because we've been doing it for three years if it's, if it's not being implemented as it was intended.
Eric, I don't see any, I don't see any reason to implement something if we don't have any idea of where it's gonna go.
But we do.
Apparently we didn't. Yeah, I'm sorry, Jack, I gotta go, actually.
Ms. Principay was next.
Okay, um, I think I'm a little confused. We have Galileo in the elementary level. And is it, Mr. Ely keeps saying fidelity. What, what does fidelity mean? That, that's confusing me, number one.
I think he means, I hope he means, that it's, that the system's been implemented the way it was supposed to be used. They, the high school and the middle school, they use the data too. They take the, the data directly from the benchmark and they use it in, and they have used it in their action plans, I believe. The system was set up though, so that, that when the results come in from the benchmark, interventions are set up, individual and small group assessments are set up very, for those specific learning groups. And so, it, really, all you have to do is find out where your students performed. And there's the assessment you have to give them. The next assessment gets more difficult, the next one gets more difficult, the next one gets more difficult. The problems get increasingly more difficult. And it tries to set them up for the next benchmark. So, so what they, what we've been doing is skipping that middle piece. We just take the data from the benchmark and, and, and just use it in the data plan. And I think they've done some good stuff with it, but it's not used the way the Galileo system was intended to be used.
Okay, here's my question. The elementary level, is it user-friendly to the elementary teachers, to the elementary students? And all of a sudden, it's not user-friendly to secondary? This is, I am so confused with this.
No, they use the same, they use the same system.
No, the question I think she's asking was, do the administrators down there and the staff find it not user-friendly?
And not teacher-friendly?
Well, we, we switched administrators at West Street, but I can tell you in Charlton Street that it's a non-negotiable. It just, it gets done.
It gets done. So it's only user-friendly for some of the schools and not user-friendly?
Well, well, it's tough down there too, and they, they need to work on it, but they, again, those, it's a non-negotiable in that school.
Shouldn't be negotiable anywhere, Mike, in my opinion. End of story, I'm done.
Mr. De Gregorio was next, and then Mr. Lazo.
Okay. When we first looked at the Galileo several years ago, obviously, Jeff, you looked at it much more closely than we would've. And you found it to be an effective tool, correct? And it is.
I find benchmark testing to be an effective tool, I didn't know Galileo.
Okay, any benchmark. If this had been utilized properly, you, do you still think that this is an excellent tool?
Absolutely.
Okay. The fact that there are some administrators that didn't really wanna use it, I'm not sure, it's too late for me to formulate words properly. They just didn't wanna use it. Obviously, that impacts this tremendously. And that's why we're getting away from it. Because there are some people who don't wanna use it for the fact that maybe it's not user-friendly. Or maybe it's because, uh, students aren't taking it seriously, which skewers the, the scoring. So, okay, so for three years, we did it, it didn't work out, we're gonna move on. I think that's really basically the gist of this whole thing. That we put this into place, thinking this was gonna work out. We, uh, found some, you know, pushback from different schools or different administrators. And you can't really, you can't force-feed this. Maybe you can in one of the schools that you've just mentioned, but apparently you can't in the other schools. So you don't really have much of a choice. It's not that we, we failed per se. Would you say that the scores here for the years that it was utilized are reflective of exactly, you know, did it do what it was supposed to do?
Uh, no, there's almost no correlation between these scores and, and how students perform on the MCAS.
Okay, so the reason for that would...
Low correlation, at least.
All right, would the reason for that be that the MCAS scores obviously carry more weight with the students? And they put more emphasis on preparing for that?
Well, I think, I think Ms. Allen was correct in that, you know, that they would just go down and click and not really take it seriously.
Okay, exactly, that's, that's my point.
And again, it's a, it's a, it's a long, difficult assessment. And it's, and it's built to be that way, you know?
So, I mean, as it stands by itself, it's simply a tool. But if you don't have any motivation to, to use it correctly, it's, it's flawed. And so, you know, and it's flawed only in the motivational sense of the word. Because if you're not, if you're just clicking away, saying, "Well, I'll click this one three times, and I'll go here, click this one twice, then that one three times, this one twice." It's random, so it doesn't really mean anything. And so, you know, I, I think that the intention was, was, uh, was where it was supposed to be. That this looked, at least it looked to this board when, when it was first brought before us, that this could be the tool that we're looking for. Apparently, there was a variable, a variable there that we all overlooked. That being that this didn't really carry much weight that would actually cause a student to be motivated.
You know, benchmark testing is used throughout the country to raise performance and raise achievement. Just by the nature of the way it's set up. You just continue to build those skills and, and solve difficult problems. I'll stand by that. It didn't work, and I respect the principals' decisions. They run those schools to, to, you know, to use, to not use it. But, you know, that, we, we administered the benchmark eight times. That's, that's essentially what it comes down to. Decided it's not gonna work there. And they've, they've found, you know, they've found alternatives to it.
Okay, I mean, I'm not trying to make a point, I just wanted to understand this for myself. Thank you.
Mr. Lazo?
First of all, I'd like to just comment on our team concept. I'd like to congratulate you on that math coordinator. Outstanding appointment, fantastic energy. I'd love to be president of her fan club. But I gotta tell you something. The problem here, I'm not gonna argue Galileo or the test. I did gain some respect for you to stand up for what you believe in tonight. I feel bad that it took three years for you to come in front of us when I would've loved to have seen you maybe at a curriculum subcommittee. It's, it's not all your fault on this number here. I do blame the way we operate. If we had a subcommittee that could sit down privately with those administrators, why there's a break between administration, not necessarily immediately, could've happened a little while ago. I'm a firm believer that if you get a curriculum team, we formed the curriculum department here for a reason, and you're the head of it. And, and we all believed in you, and we believed in Galileo. So I'm at fault too, as far as the Galileo choice. We all put our alleys in your basket because you were the pro. Now, why does it disconnect? I think maybe there needs to be more of a team concept between administration and, and Jeff, to your, to your credit, administrators have come and gone. Much like the superintendent and various other things. But you know the one thing that hasn't been changing? School committee. And that's why I think people are venting a little bit of frustration here. It's because we believed, we put our heart and soul behind it. And I, I wish this, this debate could've happened earlier on with the administration in the room, with you and with the school committee, a, a subcommittee of the curriculum or whatever. So we could've further understood that maybe we started out, but we could've tweaked it earlier, or we could've moved it right or left, or we could've dug in and said, "It's Galileo or nothing." But it's hard for the school committee to get involved and try and put some sort of opinion or something on that when, I gotta be honest with you, I didn't know. I just thought Galileo was in place, and as things went, it seemed to move on. But as I sit here today, and I got my little spanking from the state, which I disagree with the report in so many ways, maybe they're just not getting the information, that from here, moving forward, that I hope our administration, and our curriculum department superintendent, could not only, maybe you do have a good team concept, but if we don't, we better get one. We're gonna start changing some coaches. Because the school committee is not informed. I'm not anyways, maybe I'm, maybe I don't have email, that's why I don't have it. But bottom line comes down to is, I can come in anytime, sit down at any point, and discuss any one of these issues with anybody. And I, I didn't seem to have that. So whether it's Galileo, I'm not gonna sit there and argue the merits. I do respect that you stood up tonight and believed in what you believed in. But if, if our administration's moving in a different direction than our curriculum department, either the curriculum department needs to shake up, or the administration. And the school committee's gonna sit here and wanna be seeing who's on first, what's on second. It's not good for the department, it's not good for the kids or the district. And this is that leadership that the state always beats us over the head about, you know, in the direction of where we, which direction are we taking today? Are we gonna go with whole language, everyday math, Galileo? I know we have to acclimate and adjust, but not overhaul. And again, to the spinning of the wheels theory, we're gonna stop doing it and we gotta move forward. Thank you.
And I understand that, and you know, I believe today what I believe when I came here. That, that the kids at Southbridge could do a lot better than, than we expect them to do. Mr. Bit, you wouldn't think he could hide, but he did.
He can't hide.
Looking like Cupid today. But we, Mr. Bishop has a list from the college board. And it's generated from the PSAT results. Using their history, they can, they can, they can calculate. We've asked him about this. Students that, based on the results of PSATs, should be in honors classes. It's a list like this. Mr. Bishop's in the process now of moving those students to honors classes. We can expect more from those kids, and that's why I believed in the, the Galileo system. I, I believed it then, I believed it now. I'm not gonna argue statistics about, you know, what, what, you know, a hundred percent on, a hundred points on the SAT means. You know what bothers me more? That at BVT, they have a, a higher average SAT scores than our kids. And I don't care that ten more kids there take it.
Bay Path?
Bay Path, Bay Path. That just shouldn't be. And if we don't start expecting more, if we don't start expecting them to solve more difficult problems instead of just grinding through MCAS problems, none of these statistical things are gonna make a difference.
Do you have something? Dr. Domingo?
Yeah, I, you know, the two of us have had clearly some, some good times tonight here. I don't know where you got an idea that I, I supported teaching tricks to kids. I was trying to demonstrate that our kids clearly have the content knowledge that it takes, but they may be running out of time. I have no problem with our children having the content. I have two students go through district. One is in medical school, and the other one's gonna be, God knows, we're doing just fine. I have no problem with content teaching. And I think this statistic matters. It matters everywhere. We can't be saying that our students don't perform as well unless we have tested the data. That's misinformation that may lead to the wrong conclusion. And if we're talking, we have been talking about data analysis since Dr. Hanley got here. And that's what data analysis is. Data analysis, not simply counting students, is using it to interpret the effect. So I don't take it lightly when you neglect to analyze data that you obtain.
Teach and...
And you should take it seriously, excuse me. Let's be very clear on these points. And if we are done with presentation, I have two questions at the end. If we're not gonna, we're gonna debate MCAS next, I still would like to come back to the floor with two questions that I have at the end of the presentation.
Mr. Ely?
I, I, I wanna reiterate something, and I'm gonna let Jeff finish this presentation on MCAS. Benchmark testing is something I think the entire administration would agree we all believe in. I think we may have some disagreements about what form that should take, what, what company we should buy it from. And, and quite frankly, I don't have a horse in that race. I want us to use it for the right purpose, with fidelity, whatever we do. And the reason I don't like Galileo has nothing to do with Galileo. It's, the problem was, was the way Galileo was implemented in the district three or four years ago. It wasn't, the, the staff was not brought into the conversation. As, as Mr., as, as Mr. Vice Chairman over there, Mr. Lazo says, we didn't have a team on board. We were telling people they had to do something without really getting them to buy into the process. And what I will say is, is I met with the English teachers. And they, as a group, had, had a very difficult conversation, as Mr. Bishop remembers. One of my first, my first month there. It was a very difficult conversation. Because I was holding their feet to the fire about the importance of benchmark testing, and they were telling me they felt like they had a better one. And if they were selling one to me that they would use, I don't care what we use, as long as we use it correctly, for the right purpose. And I think they're on that right track. And I think the reason we're moving away from Galileo is not because Galileo's a bad thing. I don't care about Galileo. I care about benchmark testing and using it correctly to do the right thing for kids. And, and I'll leave it at that, because I could talk all night about it. I do believe, though, Mr. Lazo, you are correct, we need to get on the same page. We're sending mixed messages to our staff. And we're not involving the staff enough in those conversations, which is why we're trying to do that now. And why we've been sending people out to meet with Achievement Network and talk about the assessments that they, they use. And I think we'll see a much better buy-in with this new, this new approach. Because it is one team that has to, to work with these kids. Mr. Zangy, you wanna finish that, the, the presentation, please?
Sure.
No matter what happens to you tonight, it can't be as bad as what happened to me, so. You go right ahead. So, you go right ahead.
See, we're looking at the English MCAS performance levels, and what we saw there is just the, our performance compared to the state. And we see that over the, over the five years, their performance has been fairly flat. I didn't make one mistake in the math. In 2009, grade eight. I have 8%, 56, 25, and 11. It's 10%, 16, 27, and 48. I just recopied it from the ELA.
What was that again, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Eighth grade?
Eighth grade?
2009.
Yeah, and the eighth grade math. It should read 10%, 16%, 27%, and 48 for warning failure. I copied the English by mistake.
Jeff, I think maybe, if you could, and I know it's been a long meeting and everything. I know you're coming back for the elementary school. Could you redo these MCAS into like a graph form?
Sure.
Something you can read? You know, something, you know, showing the trend and all that, and we can talk a little bit more about the MCAS. I don't think we're going to have as much discussion about Galileo and all that at that meeting, and perhaps we can get a little more discussion about MCAS. We'll also have an opportunity to digest the report from the state, and maybe we can have a good, healthy dialogue about where we go from there on that. Does that sound fair? Dr. D'Amico, you had two questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Zangy, what are the conclusions based on the data that you presented to us today?
Dr. D'Amico, I didn't hear your question. I apologize.
What are the conclusions of the report on the data that we saw today?
Well, I think my conclusion is that, once again, it comes down to instruction, that we have to change the level of instruction, and that it always comes down to instruction, and it requires that, in my opinion, at least two things, that the expectation for our students have to change, and that we have to stop teaching the test, teaching the MCAS test. I don't think it's, you talk about a strategy that hasn't worked, I don't think it's worked. I think it wastes a lot of valuable learning time in the schools with that kind of strategy. So, that's what I think.
And one last one, based on those conclusions, what are your recommendations?
Well, my recommendation is that those two things, expectation, has to be done at the building level. And that strategy of stop teaching the test also has to be done at the building level, and the curriculum department will support those initiatives as we have in the past.
Dr. D'Amico, if I may, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to refer to the curriculum subcommittee. Mr. DeGorio, take a look at benchmark testing. We have budget sessions going on, so I think we need to have a discussion at the curriculum level to say, these are some of the thoughts on benchmark testing, SAT testing, PSAT testing, so that you can make a valued recommendation through the curriculum department with all the curriculum advisors there, to the, to the committee for the budget. Because we know how hot is that budget. We have so many documents to go through as to what we want to fund, but we really don't have time to get into that discussion. So, I'd like to refer that to you, Mr. DeGorio, for, for your handling and report back to the school committee on that.
Mr. Chairman, can we make sure that the administration is at those meetings with the curriculum team?
They will be. Sound good, Mr. DeGorio?
Sounds fantastic.
Jeff, thank you for being here. I know it's a, I mean, you know how much we talk about data, data, data. It's been a long time coming, and it's been a tough even for us, but on the heels of what the state has told us tonight, I think we as a school committee have to take a hard look at what we're doing and how we can do it better. And hopefully with your guidance and your expertise, and that of your staff and the administrators that we have in this district, we can come up with a plan to formulate to the state that we are taking a serious look at this, and we will make changes that need to be changed.
Thank you. You know the worst part about this is? This has probably been one of my best Valentines, spending it with you and especially Dr. D'Amico.
We still love you.
I want to thank you.
I love you.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Well, I haven't got kissed yet, so...
Later.
All right.
I'm not going to take that one for the team.
Report to the superintendent either. Mr. Eath, do you have anything?
I think I'll just pass on that tonight. I will say this. I have invited Michael Guinan, our plan manager, to speak to you on the 28th, to talk to you about the process that we've been going through with the Accelerated Improvement Plan. As I deep breathe with him tonight, before his wife had surgery, that he had to go back to New York City tonight. I think his perception of what we've done here, and the state's perception of what they gave you back in the report tonight aren't exactly, they don't exactly coincide. I think he'll tell you that there's a lot of good things happening in our district, and he goes around the district, he works with the administrators, and he has assured me that he's putting documentation that they're asking for, now that he knows what they're looking for. So, he's going to do a report for you, along with me, at the next school committee meeting on where we are with some of this, this data and information that they say is not important, but obviously it is.
Mr. Wiggins, report to the business manager.
While I go through my presentation, I'll ask the superintendent to hand out those 11 by 17 binders behind you all.
I'll do it if you promise to keep it short.
I promise to keep it short. I'm going to recommend, actually, you ask no questions, because ultimately, this is going to be referred to the budget committee. But this is designed to give you a quick overview. We've got a new budget model and a new process. Previously, the committee's been used to seeing a function account-based budget. The new model is what we're going to call comprehensive budgeting, and I'll explain that a little bit more in the next slide. The new process is zero-based budgeting. And for those who have not heard about zero-based budgeting, it's really quite simple, is you have, you start every year at zero, as if you had no schools, you had no district, and you set your priorities. So, the first thing you fund is your highest priority, the next thing you fund is your next highest. And then you get to a point where it's sort of your cap, if you will. And there may be things above that, but those are the first things that you look at reducing back if you have to get to a number. So, that's the essence of zero-based budgeting. And this is the first year of implementing it. It's had some glitches along the way, but that's to be expected with the new process. The evolution or longer-range goal here is to what we would call a comprehensive performance-based budget, where those priorities tie into performances. You have strong performances in an area, you look to maintain that, and then resource other, other resources into areas that you want to improve the performance. This is an example of a budget page, and don't worry about the numbers. But basically, if you're looking at it from left to right, the very left, you'll see a bunch of funny numbers, those are account numbers. I've blacked out the particular teachers here, but these are actual, actually in your budget book, you'll see these people. And then you'll see that there's an FTE, you'll see that there is a comprehensive salary, and then you'll see a bunch of columns, and they think they're basically different grants or funds. And at the very end, you'll see the school committee budget. The idea is, the comprehensive budget is what we're paying for any given person or service. From that, some of those people may be paid from grants, some of those supplies may be paid from different funds. It all comes out to the net of what you need to vote to appropriate, to raise from taxes for the people of Southbridge. And that's how we get to the bottom line. But the idea is to show you, as close as we can, the true cost of running your school district, because there's a lot of grant money that's involved here in Southbridge. The budget books you have, first page you'll see is mission, vision, and goals. You heard me talk about that way back when you interviewed me, that that's always how I start a budget. And it will have a budget summary that follows. There are seven budget locations, this is a little different, and those budget locations do follow the DES, chart of accounts, function and count. Eastford Road, Charlton Street, West Street, those are pretty common, you've had those before. Middle school level, high school level, of course, those two levels are now in one building. Something called the middle-high school shared expenditures, custodial expenditures for the new building would be an example of that. And then district-wide expenditures. We've tried to take in different things like maintenance and other types of things, and put them into one location for you to take a look at. The materials, we'll add materials as the subcommittee reviews, they'll ask questions, we'll have additional data. Some new accounts will need to be created once this process comes to its end result. Obviously, we'll update budget pages as we need to. And once the budget finally goes through the process and the town council approves it, there'll be one final point in time where we'll present the committee with what we would call a recast budget, based on that final action. And, and that would probably take place, I would guess, sometime in June. Your approval to get to town council will be in March. First, the big picture. What we're proposing to you is a budget of $24,302,66. That's an increase over FY12 of $1,147,899. I just point out that dollar figure because the cut you took this year was $1,006, or almost $1,006. We're not restoring that cut in this proposed increase. It is a 4.9% increase, and as you're going through your deliberations, 231,544 is what 1% equals. There are some issues that will be discussed in the subcommittee level that could affect this up or down. Some of those may be personnel issues, and those are some of the deliberations we'll have there. Quick look at the current revenue picture, it's cloudy at best. House Bill 2, which is the governor's budget, proposes a $411,000 increase in education aid. There's a slight decline for the general government aid for Southbridge, a little over $7,000. Assessments would increase by 61,768 in the governor's budget, that's essentially choice I am assuming, and you'll see this in summaries, that I'm assuming reductions in most greens. Quick, quick going through some of the new positions, and in your budget pages, if you see a yellow highlight on a line, that's a new proposed position. Try to do some color coding to help you, you know, pick out the big things. At Eastford Road, proposing a temporary position this summer to help with the transition, cleaning, maintenance, that sort of thing, as we reconfigure the schools. Same at Charlton Street, same at West Street. Now, they may work as a team, they may, all three of them, work at Eastford Road, then move to Charlton Street, then move to West Street, to augment the custodial and maintenance staff. At the middle school, there's really no changes. You'll see a lot of changes in the middle-high school shared, or again, in the district level. At the high school, we are proposing a .5 media teacher for the new media classroom. We are proposing a 1.0 FTE technology education teacher, to take advantage of the new technology programs and pre-engineering programs that we can offer. In the middle-high school shared accounts, we are proposing an additional day custodian. We'll show you the calculations of how we got to that. We're also proposing kind of a hybrid position. It would be a grounds person, but the grounds person also, if there is issue with the day custodian being out, or there was a need for some supplemental service, that grounds person at the middle-high school would back up that person during the day. Temporary summer help, again, is just an allocation of expenses for some of that temporary help. And then in the district, where you'll see probably the most changes, we're proposing a vocational director for two new special education programs. These special education programs are designed to bring children back from out-of-district placements. That will reduce our out-of-district tuition, that will reduce our out-of-district transportation. We feel conservatively, we can generate a net savings of about $100,000. More importantly, by developing these programs, they are potentially a future revenue source to further offset the expenditures for this program. Associated with those work experience programs would be one teacher. There would be two paraprofessionals, three job coaches, a life skills coach, and a program tutor. Lot of positions there, and we'll discuss that in some depth. We have a complete program proposal to show you. There's going, the programs would be located at the existing high school, so we are going to need some custodial help there, and some other things may be located up there as well. Part of that custodian will show being paid from a facility's rental. We are proposing a middle-high school technology position. Now, why is this here? All of the technology positions are shown in district accounts, so the place to put this position is in this location. And then again, temporary summer help really targeted more towards the maintenance crew, and supplementing the work that they're going to need to do. And yes, indeed, there is going to be work, even though it's a new school, getting that new school, you know, up and running and ready to go. Some quick other significant proposals, and these first two actually kind of go hand in hand. We're proposing some significant increases in transportation costs, but we're also proposing that you consider a lease, a lease purchase of two 10-passenger vans for special ed transportation. Quite frankly, I believe if you do that, I can get the driver's costs out of saved transportation costs. I looked at one bill today, there's one child we're transporting to one place for $61,000. I can pay, I can pay the first of a three-year lease and a bus driver, and save myself some money there. You own your copiers. Most of them have been owned for a while, we've been having problems with ours, other schools have had problems over the... There are two new copiers we need to implement the program at the new middle-high school. And so, when I looked at this, I am proposing that we look at a new fair market lease for copiers throughout the district. A fair market lease is a little less expensive lease, but at the end of the term, you don't own the copiers, you give them back. Trust me, you want to give copiers back. You just keep rolling over that money, and that's the idea of doing something like this. And then there's some expenditures associated with the elementary restructuring, which we've talked about. And I've tried, and certainly the committee wants to catch me on this as they go through the budget, try to make sure that we, particularly Charlton Street and West Street, we kept things so that, for example, there's an amount of money in there for activities, it's equal for both schools. The concept is so that both schools could offer the same types of activities and opportunities for students. The process moving forward, we're going to motion later tonight to ask you to refer the budget to the budget subcommittee, and to empower this budget subcommittee to set a public hearing when they're ready. We're going to have a subcommittee meeting tomorrow night, that is a change. I do apologize for that. I thought when we discussed it, we'd figured out the game, and somehow, we didn't figure out the game. So, I do apologize for that. I do believe we've confirmed we have a quorum that can be there for the meeting. Again, we'll have a review on March 1st, and at that meeting, hopefully, we will be setting a public hearing, which we're targeting right now, to be at 6:30 on Tuesday, March 13th. That's a regular school committee meeting, but it would be a half an hour before that meeting. The subcommittee would again meet and review and make a recommendation following that public hearing on March 14th, and then a special school committee meeting would be held on Wednesday, March 21st, 7 o'clock, to adopt the fiscal year 2013 budget. And then after that, I need to get the documents, the final documents, to the town manager by the 27th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, while I'm up here, just as easy to do it while I'm up here, one other item that's before you is a bid recommendation. Again, that's under your action items, but certainly if there are any questions on the document that was provided to you, again, normally, I would not come to you with just one bid, but this happened to be a very good bid, so we're happy to recommend it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? Okay. Moving on, school committee actions. Moved that the Southbridge School Committee accept the bid submitted in response to invitation to bid 2012-1, custodial paper products from Industrial Cleaning Products Incorporated of West Boston, Mass., and authorize the business manager to enter into and sign a three-year contract for the purchase of the products specified in this bid in accordance with the terms of the bid to commence on July 1st, 2013.
So, second.
Motion is second. Any questions, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. DeGorio?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovian?
Yes.
Mr. Lazlo?
Yes.
Mrs. Prentzeppe?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Six yes.
Item B, moved that the Southbridge School Committee refer the proposed fiscal year 13 budget to the Budget Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee. The deliberation and recommendation to the full committee, and that the subcommittee be empowered to set a date for a public hearing on the proposed FY13 budget, once it feels prepared to do so, without further authorization from the full school committee.
So, second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovian?
Yes.
Mr. Lazlo?
Yes.
Mrs. Prentzeppe?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. DeGorio?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Unfinished business. Anybody have any unfinished business? Seeing none. New business? The first read in the concussion policy? The first reading of concussion policy. Mrs. Woodruff?
That should be under school actions.
No.
No, it's, it's new business? No, you're not taking action?
I'm not taking action.
We're reading.
We got to move.
Can we, I want to move to waive the reading, but can you do it when there's no action?
That's not taking action, no.
Uh-huh.
You can move the reading on the business.
I'll move it, waive it, please.
Mary Ellen Princebey moves to re, move the, wave the reading of the concussion policy.
So, second.
Seconded by Mr. Lazo. Roll call? Yes?
Mr. Jovian?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mrs. Princebey?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff? Yes.
Mr. DeGogrio?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
I know it's getting late, it's just that the concussion policy is mandated by the state that we have to propose it. This is the process that we have to take. If anybody has any questions on the concussion policy, please feel free to come to the town hall. There's policy will be here, and we'll try to get up on the website as well. Next, the regular school committee, next regular school committee meeting will be held on February 28th, 2012, in council chambers. Any further new business? Seeing none. School committee reports. Mr. DeGogrio?
Nothing to report, but we have a meeting that will be scheduled shortly.
Thank you. That would be under curriculum policy. Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, again, we did have our meeting on January 20, 31st regarding the concussion policy, which we waived the first reading this evening. Everyone has a copy it, a copy of it in their packets. Again, if there's any questions, you can come to the town hall and get a copy and, and look it over, or hopefully it'll be on the website. One other item came up at our policy meeting, and that is the idea of a dress code for the new middle-high school. We've been getting questions from different individuals, wondering if that's something that we should think about and do. I wanted to bring it to the whole committee, as a committee of the whole, to, to think about that, and we could bring it up at another time when we have a shorter meeting, and perhaps come up with a committee who would research it and look into it, because we have had questions on that. No other meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget Facilities and Transportation, Dr. D'Amico?
Meeting is scheduled tomorrow at 7 o'clock.
Thank you. Like Bogdan, Mr. Lazo?
No report at this time of the collective bargaining subcommittee, but the chairman of the school building committee, just like a quick update, Wednesday, the 15th, building committee meeting, 5 o'clock. School committee members Friday, on the 17th, 10 o'clock, Senator Moore, and the tour is going through the school, specialty tour, is what I'm asking for. And on the 18th, Saturday, another building tour at 9 o'clock. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lazo.
And I, oh, where do you, where do we meet for the Friday tour?
In the parking lot. They're going to get the hot hats on, we have a box of hot hats that they usually give all the people that are on the tour.
Okay? This Friday.
Thank you. For you people out there in the public, our meeting has not ended, as we will now vote to go into executive session for... It's not listening to my thing here, so, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Item 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation.